Good evening to everyone, welcome. Glad to have you here. And we're calling the meeting to order. First thing that is on the agenda is to review and approve the agenda for March 23rd, 2015. Everybody wants to look at that quickly. And we'll start on that. Is there a motion or --
To approve the agenda.
Thank you, Sheri. And a second, Allison. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by raising your hands. Thank you. That's unanimous, all five that are here. And more coming. At this time, we will look at the minutes and need to know if you want to approve the minutes. Is there a motion about the minutes? Thank you, Allison. And a second, Sheri. Thank you. All those in favor of approving of the minutes, please signify by raising your hands. And one, two, three, four, five.
I actually had one change.
All right. Right on the edge, okay.
Sorry, I couldn't get into these over the weekend. But it's not, we're not just the Saks Auditorium Committee anymore, we're the Saks Building Committee. So I think we need to start referring to ourselves that way in the minutes.
Okay.
So it's not just the, it's any, it's, the Saks renovation funding has been removed, not just the Saks Auditorium renovation funding.
Okay. Those two changes, I think, from the chairman are suggested changes. Can we have a second on that motion to amend the minutes with that change? Mr. Grass, thank you.
Yeah.
All those that are in favor of that change, please signify by raising your hands. Or accepting the minutes. Okay. All those that were present for the meeting, obviously. That's a vote then of one, two, three, four, five, yeses? Yes. Okay. Moving to the next item on the agenda. Comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes are allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Is there anyone who would like to address us this evening? Please come forward and say your name.
Good evening. It's been a while since I've seen most of you. My name is Michael Nowacki, and I live here in the town of New Canaan and am a taxpayer. And tonight I decided to come here for, to give a smarter balance assessment test on subjects of history today. Not usually part of the curriculum of the standard, standard tests of the state. I'm going to use four important topics today on the subject of history. Today is a very historic day in this country because 240 years ago on this date, Patrick Henry stood at St. John's Church in Richmond, Virginia, and delivered one of the most stirring oratories in the history regarding patriotism in this country. And I'd like to read just the second paragraph of that address. And I do have copies for everybody, which I will leave on the table for you so that you would take the time to reflect upon the importance of our heritage of patriotism that is rarely respected within the curriculum in most schools in this state these days. This is no time for ceremony. The question before the House is one of awful moment for our country. For my own part, I consider it as a matter of freedom versus slavery. And in proportion to the magnitude of the subject ought to be the freedom of debate. It is only in this way that we can hope to arrive at truth and fulfill the great responsibility which we hold to God and our country. Should I keep back my opinion at such a time? Through fear of giving offense, I should consider myself guilty of treason towards my country and an act of disloyalty towards the majesty of heaven which I revere before all earthly kings. In 1787, British historian and parliamentarian Baron Acton wrote to his friend Bishop Mandel Creighton.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. Mr. Nowacki, I'm sorry, but your two minutes are up at this point.
You know what? I'd be happy to email me, to this group, my entire set of comments. And I quite truthfully believe that the First Amendment of this country has been violated by this board in setting up these arbitrary rules on the subject of the ability for someone in two minutes to air and seek grievances from our government.
We will, if you leave over on the table, we will certainly look at anything you've left for us. And your email will be certainly read by the board.
And I will be leaving copies of the Constitution of the United States and Declaration of Independence for anybody here in the room that would like a complimentary copy on this very historic date. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the board? All right. There not being anyone else knowing their comments from the public, we'll move to the reports in recognition. And the first report is the Educational Resources Subcommittee Report by Mrs. Carlson.
So our committee, which is comprised of Allison, Bedula, Hazel Hobbs, and myself, we held bi-weekly committee meetings throughout the quarter focusing primarily on two of our committees' charter deliverables. The first being the study of insurance costs to ensure that the board has the most efficient cost structure, and the second being to work with key stakeholders to continue the transparent and efficient budget process. Our primary function during this first quarter has been to act as a liaison with members of the Board of Finance, Town Council, and Selectman's Office to advance the goals and objectives of the Board of Education through this budget season. Our accomplishments to date are, first, we've been a driving force behind a joint Board of Finance, Town Council, Board of Ed meeting to discuss the best practices surrounding our health care insurance reserves. We've been instrumental in educating the Board of Finance and Town Council members on the specifics of our health insurance coverage and reserves, and getting town bodies to understand the ramifications of their decision-making on the Board of Ed budget. And we've convened meetings of the Board of Ed liaisons from the Town Council and the Board of Finance to discuss communication protocols as the Board of Ed proceeds through its budget process. Through our work on the health insurance account, we've identified an issue with our health insurance reserve as it relates to the insurance reserve policy that was put into place just under one year ago in April of 2014. You should have all received a copy of the insurance reserve policy, both via email and also, I believe it's in front of your seats today. In it, you will note that the agreement calls for the Board of Ed to hold at least 60% of the aggregate stop-loss corridor reserve in the Board of Ed's health account, and the town will hold up to 40% of those reserves in a special reserve on the town's books. Based on the town's underfunding of our health insurance by $1.1 million for fiscal 2015, 2016, we will no longer be in compliance with this policy. All town bodies are aware of this issue, and we are working to come to an agreement as to how to proceed. Just this afternoon, I had an extensive conversation with Kathleen Corbett and Dawn Norton and Jen Charneski, who are in the town offices, and Kathleen's on the Town Council, as you all know. They made a suggestion, which would still need to be approved by, you know, their various bodies, that the town finance department take a look at the health account on September 1st of 2016. So that would be after the fiscal year ends. So they'd be doing a --
2015.
2016. So for the 15-16 budget, so right now, we're going through the 15-16 budget process. They would say, we would take a look back on September 1st. So that's probably about, you know, we end on June 30th, so July, August, you know, two months, basically two months after the fiscal year ends. So they'd look back, and the reason they are doing that is because they're, they will have from Cigna, our health insurance provider, the exact incurred but not reported numbers that they can add to the balance sheet at that point. So they said they, they suggested taking a look at that, so take a look at the health account on September 1st, 2016, and calculate the reserves remaining in the health care account. If this amount is below the 60% required by the policy, they would go for a special appropriation from the Board of Finance to replenish the health care account to our required 60% level. This process could take up to two months because special appropriation is, you know, a special meeting that needs to be recorded with, you know, the Board of Finance, and we all know sort of how that process sometimes can take a little bit of time. It's, at this point, it's important for the Board of Ed as a whole to come to some sort of sense of the board as to what we think is appropriate for this process before we, you know, sort of continue discussions with the Board of Finance and the Town Council and the Selectman's Office. To educate this discussion, we have Steve Rinaldi here, our insurance consultant, and he's available for any questions any of you might have about our health insurance. And obviously, anyone on our committee can also answer any questions that you may have. So that's, let me start that.
Yes, Penny.
So I guess my first question, so I understand where we are with respect to the policies, is do we, as a, as a group, have an understanding between the Board of Ed now and the town jointly on what the policy means? Whether or not it's 60% of the reserves and 60% of the IBNR, or the IBNR in full and then 60% of the reserve?
So that --
I mean, where are we on that?
That, that conversation really happened today. And, and I think at this point, it is everyone's understanding that the IBNR is part of the health account's balance sheet. So that means all of the reserve is on the health account balance sheet. So I think there was some confusion, if it's 60% on ours and 40%, but I went through some financial statements that I created for this particular exercise, and Dawn, I mean, Jen confirmed that it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to separate IBNR. It's a, it's a liability for the health insurance account. It should be affiliated with the account that the liability is part of. So 100% will be on the health insurance reserve account, which is, is really something administered by the town anyway.
It's going to be on the health insurance reserve account?
Health insurance account. It's, you know, it's where all the, all the expenses flow through. So all the cash goes in there, and all the expenses flow through there, and then they create a balance sheet based on all of that information. And that's where the cash is as well.
Right. So it's not considered part of the reserves, it's just on the health insurance balance sheet? So when we look at our reserves, the reserves --
Well, the reserve is assets minus liabilities is the equity in the account, and that is our reserve as, for the, for the Board of Ed. On the town side, there is an allocated reserve that is separate from the health insurance account.
So are you saying that the IBNR is in the town's health insurance account, or it's with the Board of Ed?
It's, okay. I think it's confusing because the town administers the health insurance account for us. So while, so it's, it's, and Nancy can, can hopefully, you know, confirm this, but it was confirmed today. So while it's, while it is for our benefit, the town administers the health account. And it's separated from the town's balance sheet and, and the other town assets. So, so it's, so it's a separate account, and it's health care, and it's only for the Board of Ed, but the, you know, Dawn and Jen sort of create the financial statements. Would that be correct, Nancy? And then --
The auditor.
Well, the auditor, but, but yes. So, but it's, it's not, it's not part of our budgeted, you know, I mean, the, the money that we get to, to pay for the health insurance is part of our budget process, but it's a separate health account that is overseen by the town.
I'm still not clear
Yes.
on whether the board would be reserving or whether the town would be reserving. All of the dollars that got into
Right.
the health reserve account
Right.
had been appropriated at one time or another
Correct.
from the town to the Board of Education.
So the, the IBNR will sit on the health care account.
Okay.
100% of it. Because it is a liability. So it's not a reserve. I think that's, I think that's part of the confusion
Right.
that goes with this. The IBNR is not a reserve. It is a liability that sits on the balance sheet of the health account. And, and then our reserve is what is left over after we have, so we have the cash that's in the health care account. We have the IBNR that's a liability of, of the Board of Ed and, and the town for the, for the health insurance. Whatever is left over of the asset, which is the cash, minus the liability that we have to pay, is the reserve for the Board of Ed. So that's our Board of Ed reserve number.
So where does the Board of Ed reserve stand today?
Today?
Or not today, but at the end of the year when we, if we're out of compliance --
The budgeted year or this current year?
At, budgeted year. The beginning of the budgeted year.
The beginning of the budgeted year.
Right. So
So end of fiscal, this
End of fiscal '15.
This fiscal year. At the end of this fiscal year. So at the end of this fiscal year, we are still in compliance with the policy because we will have 66% of the reserve of the stop-loss corridor in reserve. So as of the end of this year, we're fine. So the underfunding of the health care account, the $925,000 underfunding of the health care account, we still have enough cash on the balance sheet of the health care account to be in compliance with the policy.
But as we move forward, and they take out another $1.1 million, we're going to fall out of compliance.
Right. And it won't be day one. Okay. So I think that's also something people have to understand. It won't be July 1st of 2015 that we are out of compliance. It will be midway through the year. And Steve, please come forward anytime you'd like, because we can, you know, I'm, you know, you are the, you're the expert on our health care, so I, you know, I'm --
So at the end of '16, how far out of compliance will we be according to our budget?
Okay. If, yes, by the end of 2016, we will be, I'm calculating, we will only have 25% of the reserve on our balance sheet.
And we're looking at, it's 25% of $13 million?
No, of the stop-loss corridor. So that's about three, 2.9 --
Right. 25%, sorry, of, it's
Yes, 25% of the
25, the, right. So it's 25% of, 25% of the, of 13 is the number we use, kind of, give or take?
Around.
Okay.
Yeah. But this, just, Steve gave us from, you know, at the
I'm just trying to figure out
through the budget process, and Nancy
How many actual dollars were going to be short?
Hopefully you have an exhibit in front of you that, two-thirds of it, you've seen before, the final column adjusts for that $1.1 million reduction. I could walk through that real quick, maybe that would help.
This guy?
Yes.
So your statement that we're all, at the end of fiscal year '16, we're only, we're going to be out of compliance with the policy because we'll only have 25% of the aggregate stop-loss corridor on our reserves, on our books. That basically means that we will not have been in compliance for a while, and that assumes that our claims are only what we're predicting, right? So if our claims are over what we're predicting, then we're going to have gone into that 25%.
Oh, yeah, right. If we go beyond, well, we're no, we're not liable for anything more than, than the 125% of what we predicted, so
But, but, but the, having 25% less means that our claims are going to come in, and we're not predicting that we go into the aggregate stop-loss corridor. We're predicting that we don't go into the aggregate stop-loss corridor, right?
I'm not sure.
So if our claims are higher next year than we expect, then we'll have, we won't be 25%
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Will be less. And if our claims are lower than expected, we would be closer toward compliance.
Right. Right.
If you're 25% higher than expected, you'll hit that trigger point, and you'll be about $600,000 short. Every year, you've budgeted such that you always could be sure that you would end the year with sufficient amount of money to fund the IBNR reserve and that corridor. And that's the case for the current year. Next year, it's not the case if the reserve agreement is calculated as seems to, as the town is calculating it, which is the 40% of everything, rather than 40% plus the IBNR.
But Penny, just, just, I think one thing we need to think about with the IBNR is that, that number is a lookback that occurs at September 1st after the budget year already, correct? I was told that, that the town gets that IBNR number at September 1st after the book, after the year ends. And they report back to the town bodies what that number should be to book on the balance sheet. So we're already getting kind of a, a look back. So, and then that's a liability. When, that would get paid when the plan got shut down. If the town of New Canaan closed someday, we decide to go back to a self, you know, to a, you know, a fully insured plan, or, you know, something else happens where we decide not to be a self-insured entity anymore. That's the only time we will run into sort of that catch-up because we have a, a funding delay. But that will come in, again, the next year out.
I, I think, whether, whether we convert to a fully insured plan or kind of change the funding at some point, you know, we create this liability during the year. Claims are being incurred in May and June, they're not going to be processed until the next fiscal year. You estimate that prospectively at approximately $1 million. And then several months afterwards, Cigna is in a position to, to give a pretty good number for, you know, what the likely run-out is at that point. In September, they really only know what was paid in July and August, that was incurred earlier. There are still claims that might be pending, but probably 70 or 80% of the IBNR is known at that point. And that could be, you know, anything with respect to your estimate. You're estimating around $1 million. It could be $400,000. It could be $1.4 million, depending on the claims that are pending at the end of the year and a lot of factors that go into it. It's relatively consistent, but it could fluctuate. So as we look at FY '16, I think the situation as, as Carlson was describing, for the first time, in the event that your claims exceeded and you hit the trigger point, you don't have enough money available to you, in combination, I mean, not only with respect to your, the reserves that you sort of control, but that, that reserve funding agreement, the sum of the two do not equate to that $4 million, $3 million corridor plus $1 million IBNR reserve. So the easiest way to solve that would be to get the town to agree that that piece of paper is worth $2.2 million. The, and if the year FY '15 ends as projected, then you're just going to be okay by, you know, I think we're calculating $20,000 short, but. So I think the most important thing is to make sure the piece of paper is worth $2.2 million. However, they want to calculate it, whatever formula they use, but that's sort of the number that you're short relative to the reserves you'll have at the end of FY '15, I think. And that exhibit that you have in front of you tries to describe that. If we interpreted the way it had historically been interpreted, 40% of the corridor plus all of the IBNR, then we're okay. But it's not being interpreted that way. It's being interpreted as 4% of the sum of the two pieces, so that's $600,000 less. And so we're $600,000 short in the case of a maximum claim problem in FY '16. Does that make sense?
Other questions or concerns? Allison?
You go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. You know, obviously, this is a very complicated subject, and we're a little bit like a puppy chasing its tail on this, going round and round, and for good reason, because it's one of these things where every time you think you understand it, you, you kind of trip yourself up a little bit. But I think as a board relative, instead of getting caught up in percentages of dollars, which are obviously very important, I think as a board, we also have to look conceptually at what we're doing. Because we've kind of had a longstanding practice on the board of covering our own risk. And we're shifting away from that now. We've been shifting away from that for the last couple of years. But we're really being asked to shift away from that now, I think, in terms of the town. Because now the town's basically saying, you know what, we'll cover your risk for you, which, which they will. I'm sure they will. We all know they will, and they're very well-meaning and thoughtful when they say that. The question is, how are they going to cover our risk? And, and the agreement. And I think that's where we're getting caught up a little bit. We've always covered our, our projected claims. We've always gone to the town with a full budget. It's been consciously done with the town and the board to underfund that because we've always been carrying a reserve balance. And we've had significant reserve balance that we've all agreed we wanted to bring down. And we've been doing that over the years. And it's been done again, very thoughtfully, and, and it's smoothed everything out, and everybody's been in agreement on that. But we're reaching a point, which we've been predicting for years now, is we're no longer to be able to do business as usual. And we're getting to that point now because we're running out of reserves. And really, what we're talking about, and I guess I'm oversimplifying this probably, but we have anticipated claims. We want to cover that. We also, we're liable for 125% of those claims. So we have to cover an additional 25%. And that's really what we're talking about, is that 25%. So we've always carried that in our reserve balance, that 25%. Well, now we're running out of reserves. And last year, we came up, the policy that the town had agreed with the board to make everybody kind of comfortable, the changes we were making, is we will carry up to 40% of that, the board, at least 60% of that. And I think the issues come down to now with the budgeting this year, and then looking at taking the 1.1 out, is that policy no longer stands. They won't be in compliance with that policy next year, as Dion has done a tremendous amount of work on this. And that's really, as a board, what we need to be discussing is where, where's our comfort level? Because the risk is ultimately ours, and it's our superintendents, quite frankly, and we all, you know, received in the notes, the Friday notes, that we cannot go over our budget. You know, we cannot go over our budget. And we've always had the money here to protect ourselves not to go over our budget. But if we don't have those reserves here in our account, that possibility exists. And that's a liability to every board member, it's a liability to the superintendent, and it's a liability to the town. So for me, this is more of a philosophical discussion versus percentages or dollars because whether it's 15% or 20% or 25%, it doesn't really matter. It's just whether or not we have a policy that we're comfortable with, whether we're agreement with the town, what the details of that policy and the responsibility the town and the board are. And if that's in fact the, the strategy we want to take as a board, because we're changing a longstanding practice that previous boards have all felt very comfortable with, that's not a reason not to change because the times are changing and we change with the times. But we have to understand that the changes that we're making and that we're agreeing are going to affect the boards going forward. And so that's, what I look at our responsibility as. It's not about just this year, it's not about next year, it's about five years from now and 10 years from now. Because quite frankly, once we give up these reserves or make shifts in policies and things, it's not going to come back to us. And so that's my, more my concern, because my view on insurance is not that, and I think, Steve, you pointed this out before, that we've, we've done really well with our insurance plan. And we've been very lucky as a town and as a board in the sense that we haven't had any real disasters. And so I think we've become a little bit maybe complacent in the sense that we're comfortable with that. And, and moving forward, that could change next year, or the year after, or the year after. We could have, find ourselves in a completely different position. I'd rather position ourselves for that than thinking, okay, we haven't had an issue, so we don't really need to be concerned about that. In other words, my house hasn't burned down in five years, so I'm not going to get insurance on my house because I've been golden for five or 10 years, so it's, you know, been a waste of my money. I don't look at it that way. You know, I'd be very happy if I pay insurance for the next 25, 30, 40, 50, 80 years, and my house never burns down. So I guess that's, that's how I'm looking at it in terms of us as a board, is that I think it's kind of our responsibility to, to, to plan for what might happen, which is the whole point of insurance, and not necessarily just to sit back on our laurels because we haven't had any issues and things have gone very smoothly, so we're not going to plan for the unexpected. So that's what I'd like to see us discuss kind of as a board, is how comfortable are we in terms of where we want the risk to be assumed, and the communication we want to make sure we have with the town. And Dion, as you had, you know, discussions today with them. But we all need to be on the same page with this. I think we rushed through this policy a little bit last year because we felt kind of confined by the budget schedule. And as a result of that, there's, you know, a little bit of misinterpretation on, you know, one part or the other, we're not all agreeing to it. So I just want to be really careful that we're thoughtful and we're really careful on our deliberation on this, because this is really a very long-term decision that we're making for, for future board members. So I'm sorry, I probably just kept the puppy going around and round a little bit more, but.
Scott?
I think that's extraordinarily well-stated. I, I would say that, the one correction I might make is that we hope we're making decisions that are longstanding. It appears as though the decision that we made last year hasn't been particularly longstanding. I do think philosophically, Allison hit the nail on the head. We have to decide, do we want to control 100% of our risk between the money that we have in our account and the money that the town holds in a have in our account and the money that the town holds in a separate account specifically earmarked only for this? When you add to that the fact that they're now saying, it's okay for you guys to go under compliance, out of compliance by underfunding, and then at the end of it, we'll replenish it, which to me sounds like the town is asking us for a loan. We're supposed to spend our money, and at the end of time, they will give it back to us. Philosophically, I have an issue with that. Whereas, you know, the chances of us going through 125% of our expected claims is admittedly small, the chance of doing it and being unable to pay insurance claims as they come in because of the timing, if it's going to take months to get a special appropriation, as it has to go through the town, the selectmen, the Board of Finance, the town council, all of these things in a sequential manner, during the course of that period of time, we could not only fall out of compliance, but we could, we could literally, again, not likely, but we could literally be without the money to pay insurance claims. And I think that we owe it to the employees of the school system not to put ourselves in a position where that could even possibly occur.
Thank you, Scott. Everybody want to weigh in? Sangita?
No, I agree. And, and thank you, Allison, for kind of like just putting, you know, again, what the emphasis, what we're really looking at here with, with the idea for this. I too am kind of concerned in that, you know, if we, even though it might have been a little bit rushed to do this policy last year and figure out, and that there's some questions about it, but we did create something. And what's the purpose? If we create something, if it's going to be negated the following year, or it is, is not going to hold its weight. So, I think it's good to take our time and make sure that it's very clear what we decide and deliberate. I do agree that, you know, this is something we can't go over. And as much as, as you said, is that, as Scott mentioned, we, it's unlikely that we hit that scenario, but it's not unheard of. School districts do have bad years, and we can't be over our budget. So, I think it's very important that we are covered, because it is a liability, that's part of our job as, as the Board of Ed, to make sure that, you know, we cover the expenses and, and part of our financial duties to, to the board. So, I agree that we need to come up and, and make sure that we are covered. Again, the percentages, you know, the 60-40, that's, I'm not part of the resource committee that would be decided that, that breakdown, so I'm going to leave it to the, those that know a little bit more in terms of what that breakdown comes to, as far as the percentages. But if we agree that this is what it is, I'd like to stick with it.
Penny, thank you. Sangita?
The last paragraph of this policy says that the 60%, three-fifths reserve within the Board of Education Health Benefit Fund, so that's our share of it, will be evaluated each budget cycle. If this reserve falls below the 60%, it will be replenished to its full 60% at the next budget cycle. So, I guess what I, what I'd like to know is, are we, and I'm not, maybe it depends upon what point of time you look at this, but are we under that 60% now? I mean, are we, so are we under an obligation to go forward?
Excuse me?
Are we under, as soon as we fall under that, that 60%, we're under an obligation to go forward to replenish it?
We're not through this fiscal year, obviously, but even with the predictions that we're getting from Steve and, and, and sort of our monthly reporting from Nancy, we will be, if, unless something catastrophic happens between now and the end of the year, we will be in compliance with the policy at the end of the year. In fact, we will have a little bit extra at the end of this year.
Okay. Well, okay, so what I don't understand is, is that sounds like cash flow, and, and maybe this is where my, my accounting background is, is, you know, lacking, so please educate me. But it would seem to me that, you know, regardless of whether or not the money's sitting on the town side or our side, if we're going to have 14 million in claims, and at the beginning of the year, and we know we're going to have 14 million approximately, and then we have to have our 25% reserve corridor, we're going to want our 14 million in claims, which will actually fund the IBNR at the end of the year, and we're going to want our 25% in reserves. So, what I don't, and if we have that at the beginning of every year, then we wouldn't go out of compliance. I mean, wouldn't that, wouldn't we want that on our balance sheet at the beginning of every fiscal year? And if we don't have that on our balance, and if we had that on our balance sheet at the beginning of this fiscal year, then we wouldn't go out of compliance unless our claims exceeded what we were projecting they would exceed. So, so on that analysis, it strikes me that we are out of compliance.
But you're intentionally drawing it down by 1.1 million dollars next year. So, that's what makes you non-compliant. Just in that exhibit that, that you have, if you go to the middle of the FY 15 column, we think FY 15 will end with total reserves of about, after that $924,000 drawdown, we think we're going to end with that first yellow line at 2.87 million. So, we think you'll have in your kind of, in your, as your, a total asset in the Internal Services Fund, 2.87, and kind of what you need or your maximum liability is right below that, a couple of numbers below that, at 3.8. So, we think you're going to end 2000, FY 15 with a 70% factor. You'll have 2.8, and you'll need 3.8. The rest of it is being provided by the agreement. But next year, you're going to pull that reserve down intentionally by 1.1, and that's what will get you below, below that standard.
Right. So, based upon that, we don't actually really have 3.8. If we take part of the reserves and we then allocate it in our minds to the, the expected expenditures, then we have 1.1 million less than the 3.8, which means we really have, that we can rely on for non-expected expenses. Instead of having 3.8, we really have 2.7.
Well, we really don't have 3.8. We have, we, we think we're going to end FY 15 with 2.8. That's the first, the 2.87.
Because it's only a 900 drawdown this year.
Okay.
So, we think we're going to end the 2.87 at the end of this year. And then, to, to answer your question, are we in compliance? We want to test that against sort of everything you, you might have to pay at the end of the year. And so, your maximum liability is that 3.8, the million-dollar reserve plus the corridor.
Right, okay.
So, we're saying we have 2.87, we might need 3.8, we're over the 60% kind of threshold. As we go into next year, that 2.8 is going to be drawn down by 1.1.
Right.
So, you're going to be at 1.77 next year. If you allocate a million dollars to the reserve, the only, the million dollars to the IBNR, the only thing you're left with now is $740,000. That's it. So, every, all that whole, the whole rest of the corridor now has to be potentially funded through that, that reserve agreement. And that reserve agreement is interpreted such that it's $600,000 short. So, if you had a horrendous year left next year, you won't have, September is too late to fix that. If you have a horrendous year, you're blowing through these numbers in April and May, you need the money then, not in September, and now you're faced with, how do, how does one obtain it? Well, you request a supplemental appropriation and go through that process and hope it's delivered by January, um, by June 30th.
So, I, so if that's the case, why wouldn't we ask the town bodies to replenish the IB, to replenish their share of the reserves to the point where that's not going to, that wouldn't happen? So, that whether it's 40-60 or whatever it is, we're, we're covering all the risk?
I think that's sort of what we're trying to figure out tonight, what we want to do, is sort of what is, what as a board are we comfortable with, and what are we willing to go back to the various town bodies with?
Can I just ask you, you said that you had a meeting today? Did, I know at the last meeting that we had, that Rogers said that they were meeting and they were going to come up with some ideas. I mean, have you heard their proposal?
This, you know what? No. This, this was, and it was very clear that this was not a binding offer, because, you know, Kathleen had to go back to the town council to get, you know, approval. So, it's, it's very preliminary, and, you know, and Dawn and Jen have no policy authority. They just are the people that, you know, administer the books, so, you know, they, they, but they will be advising, you know, the selectmen as those who administer the books.
So, we need to decide now, hopefully as a board, like how we want to proceed? If we want to accept what they are telling us, or if we want to go with, like, the way we've had it?
Yeah. Steve, a question or two, and forgive me, I'm, I'm new in the insurance game here.
Yeah.
But working to figure it all out. Is one way to look at sort of our current reality today, that we're not, given the policy the way it is and the way the money is, that we're not fully funding the 25% risk corridor? And, I mean, I think if that's one way to sort of interpret this, can you talk a little bit about other districts you work with and other things you do? Are there other districts that don't fully fund that, whatever that risk corridor is, that choose not to do so? Or, in your experience, do districts generally or always fund that corridor?
It's really kind of all over the place. You have a whole bunch of districts all the way on the conservative side that say, since we, we as a school district would want to be able to fund that corridor, and we can't just from a budget reality. Imagine a fully insured plan. I mean, a, a district like Ridgefield, for example, has been fully insured this whole period of time when you were self-funded. Only this year are they converting. And that's true with a lot of districts. It's kind of healthcare reform has really just made it so burdensome now. But there are, there are dozens of districts that are of your size that remain fully insured, trapped in a fully insured plan because they can't figure out a way to, if I convert from a fully insured plan to a self-insured plan, I'll save about 10%. Well, but I have a 25% corridor, and I don't want to put the school district at risk for the balance of that, so how do I get there? And so, then sometimes there's conversations with the municipal counterpart, how can you help us do this over time? And in many cases, they conclude they can't help, or they won't help, and so the district remains fully insured. So, there's dozens of examples like that, and there will be continually. Some districts will say, well, one way to do that is to set the stop-loss level at 110 or 115. It's very expensive, three or four, $500,000 expensive, so we're not going to save 10% by self-funding, we might only save 5% by self-funding. And as we, if we can organically build that reserve over time, then we'll start to increase the stop-loss level to reduce the premium associated with that. The Trumbull School System did that a couple of years ago. They're still at 110 because they can't get that reserve corridor bigger. In almost all cases, there's a very comprehensive agreement, I have some, I brought some samples with me, if you'd like to look at them, between the municipal counterpart and the school district, explaining in detail, and it usually takes a year or so to kind of thrash out, how would, how is this all going to work? And it's everything, it's all, it's all geared towards the school district, trying to figure out an answer to that question, how can we be sure that in the event of a catastrophic claim year, which does occur, that we can fully fund this corridor without the laborious process of a supplemental appropriation that drags on after June 30th? So, some districts, some districts are very reckless about it. They, ah, it's never going to happen, and maybe it won't. And, and they all think they're geniuses because it hasn't happened. So, but if it does happen, they would be in a lot of trouble, and there are examples in the last five or 10 years of districts that wound up in that situation. And it's, there's a lot of leveraging that goes on here, and it gets bad pretty quickly. If you really kind of, you know, miscalculate, or if you've just missed a trend cycle and trend picks up, you're, you're setting a budget now for claims that are going to be paid in June of 2016. So, if something really big happens in the next three or four months, your budget has long been put to bed, and, and, and you could find yourself very short. So, they're really kind of all over the place. I mean, the best, you've been the best. I mean, when, when we talk, tell the clients about this, we point, we point to you. This is, to be sure you could handle a catastrophic situation, this is the kind of posture you want to have. And in FY 16, the way it is right now, you can't, you can't say that any longer, and that's the first time in 20 years probably that you won't be able to say that, unless you can get that piece of paper interpreted to be worth 2.2 million payable before June 30th, in the event you needed it.
Scott? I want to make one point and then ask a question. We have raised our individual stop-loss from, from, sorry, from 100,000 to 300,000. So, we've put ourselves theoretically at risk for claims, any claims that come in over 100,000 and under 300,000, we're going to pay those. I, I assume that was put into the calculation for our expected claims.
Yes, certainly.
But for the first year, as we're transitioning, we're really at the most risky profile we've been at from that standpoint. I think we need to keep that in the back of our mind. But my question is this. So, we have a, a fund, and we've automatically in our mind assigned the liability of the IBNR to it. If we got into a situation where literally the town foisted upon us this, and our choice was to dramatically increase class size or try to live within the confines of an insurance agreement, and the catastrophic events occurred, and we were responsible for the 25% corridor, instead of not funding the corridor, can't we not fund the IBNR?
Steve?
I, I don't, I don't think so. Usually, the way the process occurs is, your, your books close on June 30th, the, the auditor writes a letter to all your vendors, asking them, are there any, has there been any incurred expenditures that haven't been paid for? And Cigna writes back and says, oh, yes, about, you know, a million dollars worth of claims have probably been incurred and haven't been paid. In September, they'll know 70 or 80% of it exactly. And the auditor will say, well, where's the asset that offsets this million-dollar liability? And you're going to say, what asset? And they're going to say, you're in a deficit of a million dollars.
That's correct. But, to me anyway, that's far preferable to saying to somebody who presents an insurance claim that we're not paying it. You know, that does give us time theoretically to at least go back to the town and, and allow for the process of a special appropriation. I mean, I, I do, no one is more adamant than I that we need to have this and that we need to be secure, where the town of New Canaan, we are not, you know, the Gress family living, you know, such that we can, we shouldn't have to worry about these things. We can have this amount of money here, we can do this safely, we can do this without overburdening the taxpayer. We've done it forever. That said, I do think we need to be honest and fair with ourselves too, and we need to be honest with the town. So, there, there is an IBNR amount of a million dollars in there too, that if some, you know, if they did that and something got catastrophic, it's there. I think it's shameful that we should be forced to think that way, but it's there. But, the town has already taken the 1.1 million dollars.
Out of the budgeting process.
Out of the budgeting process. So, we would in, in effect, if we're unhappy, we need not only to go back and say, wait, you can't cut us anymore, as the town council seemed to want to do, we have to go back and ask them to replenish what they took. That's a big step.
Right. That, that will happen after year-end at this point, you know, in, through a, a special appropriation.
But it won't happen at the end this year because we're not out of compliance at the end this year.
No, not this year.
We have to wait till we're out of compliance and then start to ask them, and that seems to be an awful lot of unnecessary work for everybody.
Sherri?
So, just to Scott's point, Deanna, I was wondering if that came up in your conversation today, so that if, if the town recognizes that with the, with the 1.1 million dollar reduction, that that would take us on a projected basis at the end of the '16 fiscal year down to 20%? And are they recognizing that at that point, they would need to, in effect, replenish that 1.1 million? Or that, you know, a slightly smaller amount? But so that this is truly kind of a timing?
Right, right.
Cash flow that they're playing with?
Yes, yes. I think, I think, yes, it is a timing issue, and I think that they are trying to use the IBNR. I mean, I think this is that whole cash versus accrual. So, on a cash basis, we have cash, but when you accrue for our liabilities, you would show a negative equity position in our account, and, and, you know, the end-of-year books would show a negative equity position in the health account. So, we would have money, but it would have to be replenished. And so, there is a, it's a ti, it is a timing issue, but I think, you know, we, we also have to think about long-term what, what we're comfortable with as a board, and I, you know, I want to.
Are there any other ramifications of having a negative deficit in terms of, you know, perception vendors being using, whether Cigna wants to, you know, deal with self-insuring somebody that was going to go negative, or, I, I don't know, I mean, is there?
I, I don't think there'll be any impact with, vis-à-vis Cigna. I mean, as long as the claim account is being funded, I mean, they'll shut down the claim system if the claim account doesn't get funded, and they won't be lending you the money. I'm not sure how it's accounted for. I don't know if, you know, you do a lot of reporting to the state, I don't know what a negative Internal Services Fund number, I don't know how that's treated from an accounting standpoint or state standpoint.
Nancy, would you like to help us on that?
We actually account for it based on the appropriation and the expenditures that are moved as part of that appropriation into the drawdown account, the actual bank account, where all of the healthcare charges, regardless of whether they're Cigna, or fees, or Mutual of Omaha, or whatever, are all folded into that cash account, that bank account. As opposed to when you look at the financial statement, the balance sheet, as opposed to the income statement, that really talks about all reserves, whether they're held in that particular bank account, or in other non-liquid types of accounts, or different types of investments elsewhere in the town that are earmarked specifically for that account. So Deanna's absolutely correct. It's an issue of cash accounting and the modified accrual basis. So that as long as you have cash that can fund all charges, not just Cigna claims, then again, the, the issue is one of how does, is fine from a cash perspective. It's from the modified accrual slash financial statements. And the town would have to inform the auditor that there's a conscious choice to show a balance sheet with a negative equity and to also show a loss on the income statement. Again, whether that would impact anything in terms of the town's bond rating, for instance. Borrowing ability for AAA rating, which New Canaan is, probably would not be negatively impacted by this one service account. Given the total amount of reserves both restricted, for instance, the policy clearly talks about a restricted account for, currently for the, for the town's reserve, versus what they were discussing the other night, and I don't know if you got into this, Deanna, in terms of an unrestricted, so that the funds are not specifically set aside.
I have consciously not even broached an unrestricted reserve.
I would think an unrestricted reserve on the town's part for any portion of their responsibility would be absolutely unacceptable.
It's not acceptable, to me at least. Sherry, then Allison.
I just wanted to follow up. And while I appreciate the importance of the philosophical conversation, I mean, we do have this policy. And I just want to point out, someone already did, but the last bullet point, in effect, with that 1.1 million reduction, we, we would not be out of compliance. Because this last bullet point basically says that within the budget cycle, if you fall below the 60%, it, it allows for that contingency. So in effect, we would not be out of compliance with this policy. And I'm sure that's what the town is thinking right now. Because it basically says, if, if you fall below the 60%, that will be revisited and replenished at the next budget cycle. So right now, we're sitting at 66% at the end of this fiscal year, entering the next fiscal year at 66%. It's, you know, still above 60%. I, I'm just.
I think, I think though that either they're looking to modify the policy because, you know, or, or, you know, we would as a board, to stay within it, would have to modify where we take out that 1.1 million dollars to stay in compliance. So I, I think the whole issue is that we're trying to find a way to stay in, because I'm not sure that they're going to, I'm not sure that they're, they're willing to keep the policy language realizing what happened.
And this was just, this policy was just on last year.
Yes.
So they're proposing changing this language?
Yes. Even though we have not even completed the year.
If the town is interested in reducing the amount of money held by the Board of Education, which seems to be the goal, how would we feel about proposing to the town that they accepted the liability for the IBNR? And that we remain in compliance, even projected compliance, with the corridor as a compromise offered to them? Then the truth of the matter is, an IBNR is never, yes, it's a liability, but it's a liability that is never going to be paid until we do away with our insurance policy, as it is today, our self-insurance policy. So, or our self-insurance platform. So if we say that that, the likelihood of that happening is slim, and the town will guarantee, should that happen, that they will accept that liability and that responsibility, then that allows us to work within the confines only of the 25% corridor.
Allison? Do you, oh, do you want to respond to that first, Steve?
Steve, do you have any feedback on that?
I do. Well, if I understood, if I understood that, you would essentially be telling the town to assume that liability and to pledge some other town asset to fund it.
Correct.
Without removing any assets from the board's Internal Services Fund to keep those funds there.
Right.
So I don't, I don't know that they'd be thrilled to do that because it doesn't reduce the assets that they're trying to reduce. They're, and I don't know that the auditor.
But what it does is it allows them to assign out of the general fund, an unrestricted amount equal to the IBNR.
And it does essentially get the policy to equal that 2.2 million dollars you were talking about.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that they would, it makes sense to discuss.
How many issues that are involved with, I mean, because I know sometimes you have to keep certain things in certain pockets, whatever.
It, it's very, you don't want liabilities separated from the assets that they represent. It makes, I mean, from, from an auditing perspective, it's like, why, why do I have a liability? And the assets associated with that liability are somewhere totally different. It's, it's.
Wouldn't the liability go with the assets?
That means it's on the healthcare account. Because the assets are, the assets are in our healthcare account and the associated liability.
What I'm suggesting is we pull the IBNR liability out of the assets account and we, and we give that to them.
Right, but it's not.
And let them assign their own assets to it.
Right, but I, I understand what you're saying theoretically. As an accountant and as an auditor, it is very unusual, and this is why we had this discussion at length today, to separate the liability from, from the asset that it's tied to is horrible financially, I think. You know, I, I think that is horrible financial practice. It is completely confusing and to try and track that long-term, why, why would you separate them? And, and quite frankly, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, I'm not sure it helps the town. As Steve said, it doesn't help the town because then they still have to fund it. So I, I think, you know, I think we want our health account, we want, and from a board perspective, we need visibility into what the assets and liabilities for this program are. And, and once we start sending it elsewhere, it puts a huge onus on board members to be tracking liabilities that we're not having visibility into. And, and especially if it's unrestricted. Because then we're like, okay, well, what are all the other liabilities that the town has to the police and to the fire and to the, to the general town that we, now we have to be paying attention to? Which, as I've said before, I was not elected to follow the, the liabilities of anything else besides the Board of Education. And I don't really want any more responsibilities in that, especially since I don't have any control over them. Let me go back, Allison, didn't mean to skip you, please.
No, I, I'm, I'm still trying to wrap my head around why, if we have a healthcare fund that has served the town well for a decade or more, it's held up as a model in the state, you know, why we're even having this discussion? And, and, you know, it's so successful, it's been so successful, to me, it's almost like we're creating risk where there is none.
Absolutely.
We're creating a problem that we don't have to have. So I, I'm wrestling with why, you know, and how as a board we approach this. Because it's been successful, it's worked, why are we changing it? And we talked about, I know, you know, at the town level, they're obviously looking to, you know, keep the tax rate, the mill rate down, keep the taxes, taxes down for the citizens, which includes all nine of us on this board. So we're well aware of trying to keep, you know, taxes at a reasonable level. But I'm, I'm, so that's what I'm grappling with. Because we've gone from having a reserve account that's been held by the board and controlled by the board, to a reserve account where we wrote the policy last year because the town was looking to take some money from it. We, we weren't comfortable as a board, we increased the individual stop-loss, we brought the IBNR, we've, we've tinkered with everything we can tinker with, basically. And now we're left with that reserve piece. And so last year, we kind of said, okay, fine, we would be comfortable if this policy was written. So the policy was written, we all had a certain level of comfort, we approach, now we come into this budget season. And my concern is that the discussion is now, you know, yeah, we said 60/40 last year, but guess what? We want more money now on the town side, so we're just going to change that policy. And that's a real concern to me, and I voiced that at the last, at the last meeting. Again, we have a lot of very well-meaning, thoughtful people looking at this, so I'm not overly concerned. But what I am concerned about is there's a spectrum of, a, a spectrum of desire on the board side, I mean, I'm sorry, on the town side. So we have some people saying, okay, well, let's, let's change that a little bit, you know, but we'll, we'll keep it in a restricted fund. We have some people saying that we, we don't want to do the 60/40, we just want to keep all of your reserves in a restricted fund. And honestly, it's not going to save the taxpayer, I don't think, unless I'm mistaken, it's not going to save the taxpayer any money, whether that money is held in a restricted fund at the town level, or whether it's held at the board level. That money's going to be held somewhere, and everyone's going to be taxed for it, so it's not, it's not going to save any money to the taxpayers. And I think the only reason, the only way that money would be saved to the taxpayer, and I've heard this from people, is to say, okay, we're going to take all the money from the reserves, we're just going to put it in the general fund, and if you guys have an issue, come to us, you know, and we'll fund it. And that, I'm personally incredibly uncomfortable with. Because now we no longer manage that money. We have to go back to the town. It's part of the general fund, so God forbid there are multiple things going on in town at the same time. And we're not the only one going back and asking for something. So I'm just trying to wrestle with this, and I'm trying to figure out where as a board we go with this. Because I'm really concerned about the risk. I think we've taken additional risk, and Steve, we talked to you about that. I think the individual stop-loss change that we made last year did not serve us well. I think we lost money on that piece.
And you also removed the retire, you moved a big chunk of retirees outside of the stop-loss program. There was another, I mean, you made two changes that, last year was, not just change, you also moved the Medicare Supplement retirees outside of the stop-loss program. So yes, it's, it's definitely a significant change in the risk posture with, with substantially reduced financial wherewithal to, to handle a big problem. Some of the alternatives could be to, you could look at starting to, you know, lower the stop-loss level, reduce the corridor to 15%, reduce it to 10%. That makes your premium go up. It's going to cost, you know, as, as you reduce that, that, you know, that $50,000 relatively insignificant premium will go to 150, 250, 350, 450.
What would it go to for 15, because at the end of 15, 16, we're, with us at 25% and the town at 40, that's 65% of 25%, so about 16% of the total. If we lowered our, our stop-loss to 15% so that we would be comfortably, completely funded, what is the, I know that you're going to have to look into it, but what would you guess the increase would be?
About 200,000.
Yeah, it's huge.
From 50 to 200s?
Huge. It doesn't make any sense.
To 250, okay.
But then you, then you've met your policy where now you've fully funded the corridor because you've collapsed the corridor. Or worst case, if you conclude a year or two from now that you have no money, you convert back to a fully insured plan and forego millions of dollars in savings each year because you can't meet your policy. I mean, that's, that's the ultimate step to protect, to protect yourself.
Go on, Deanna, Penny's been waiting for a long time. Penny, do you want to still say what you wanted to say?
Well, I guess two points. Philosophically, I think where, where I am as a Board of Ed member is that we've always had segregated, specifically reserved accounts to fully fund the IBNR and the aggregate stop-loss corridor. And however we end up this year and looking ahead to the next year, I think we should be in, in that position. And I think we should be in that position not just at June 30th of 2016, we should be at that position on July 1st of 2016, when we have to potentially kind of accrue all the liabilities that we think we're going to have. So in my mind, if I'm looking at July 1, 2016, I've got to lock 1.1 million off of that, out of the reserves at that point, because I already know that I'm planning to spend those. So that's what we're predicting that we're going to spend. So we really at that point only have, we're starting a fiscal year where we're expecting, say, 6% more than our 15 million in claims this year, and we're only going to have a $700,000 reserve to fund those. So we've got about a 5% reserve, what?
Plus 1.2 on the town side. Plus 1.2 on the town side.
But I guess what I'd want to do on that, on the town side, is I'd want to make certain that nobody from the town came back and said, well, yeah, but you, before, you're supposed to go through your 60%. You were supposed to have 60%. And you don't have 60%. So we're not going to fund you until you get to your 60%. And then our 40% will kick in. You know, I just, you know, the, the people change on the town bodies, and, and everybody is well-intentioned, and then these things are complicated, and, you know, all these questions get raised. And we, we thought we had a policy last year, everybody fully understood, and now we're not sure. So, yeah, I, I just think we need to have some sort of an agreement with the, the town bodies and waiting till October of 2016, when we're going to have a whole nother set of elections next year, and the personnel are going to be different, to try and fix this. I think we should fix it now, so that we're not worried about it.
Do you have something you want to add on that to say how?
Well, the only other thing I thought with respect to the IBNR is that initially, I thought it was this kind of reserve that kind of floated out there year after year that we never got to. But at the, the first meeting I went to of the subcommittee, you explained that basically the IBNR is part of the, kind of the allocation, the expected expenditures every year. And it's, so we actually spend it down every year, and then it gets replenished on June 30th every year out of the appropriation from the year before. Is that right? So it's not like a static amount that goes from year to year. It, it gets spent and it gets refunded every year.
Well, it's kind of an accounting approach and a kind of a cash flow approach. The accounting approach is a, a liability is booked on June 30th for a million dollars, and then an asset is claimed, right, to offset that liability. That asset then gets expended in July and August throughout the year to creating a surplus in the budget, so that on June 30th, you have a surplus in the budget of about a million to, to book the next IBNR. So you, you are in, in effect, expending, you're, you're paying the liability that was created in the very, at the end of the prior fiscal year, and then replacing that asset that was used to, to pay that off. In a real, from a real cash flow standpoint, I mean, you have an asset sitting over here, and it just sits there, and you use your budget to fund 12 months of claims during the budget. And if that IBNR reserve has to increase, then you build into your budget, not the full IBNR, but just the increase. I mean, but I think from an accounting standpoint, and the way the, the town's accounting folks described it, is, is, as I just described, you pay it off and then you replenish it at the end of the year. So I, I think it's a real cost, it's a real expense every year, not just in, in the event you terminate the plan.
So we're looking to come to our options. We are in the 11th hour. You know, which also, quite frankly, is very disappointing that, that there was supposed to be work done over the course of the last year. And although the town council told us they had been working on it over the last year, we first found out about it when we were invited to a meeting on February 12th. That notwithstanding, really the options we have are, we're underfunded according to our policy, and we need to go to the town and ask them to reinstate the money that they took. And if they then say no, then it comes down to what do we want to do to fund that deficit? How do we make that up? Do we make that up by taking it away from educational programming? Do we make it by, you know, if we have to all of a sudden say, we're going to stay in compliance because that's what we believe is the proper thing to do, we're going to have this amount of money, we're under by, what would the total be, 600?
600,000. I, what, what, what I think needs to happen is the town has to define that reserve policy to be worth 2.2 million.
And assuming they say, thanks anyway, we then have to.
A 600,000 dollar problem.
Find 600,000 dollars in our budget. And I think we need to start thinking about where that 600,000 is going to come from, so that we're at least prepared for the worst-case scenario.
Allison?
I just wanted to say too, that I, I think somebody mentioned this earlier, again, thinking a little bit longer term, but someone had mentioned something about the town's efforts to consolidate their funds. And I know we, we've had discussions with them, and they're, they're consciously trying to, to do some cleanup and consolidate funds. And I think we need to make sure that the, the Board of Education Healthcare Fund is not one of those, that that's not thrown into, into the bucket with some of this other cleanup that's being done. That, you know, that, that again is a, is, is very definitely a, a concern of mine. And I think other board members should be aware, who weren't at the meeting the other day, but we had a meeting with the, I think it's called the Town Council Finance and Government Committee, or something along those lines, the committee that's actually looking at the insurance piece. And I think it's important for the Board of Ed members to understand that at that meeting, one of the co-chairs of that committee announced. the co-chairs of that committee announced that one of their goals was there would be consolidation of the board and the town healthcare funds. And the date was July one, two thousand and seventeen. And that was news to all of us, needless to say. There hadn't been any discussions or anything, anything talked about there, so we'll have to have that transparency, collaboration, cooperation discussion again. But if that, in fact, is the intent of the town, then I think that's something we need to be aware of also, you know, not just in terms of the decisions that we're making. Because again, our job is to protect the Board of Ed and to protect the superintendent and protect the administration, as well as we're all taxpayers in the town. So we're kind of seeing it on both sides. So I think we need to keep that into consideration when we're making these decisions. Because again, long-term decisions that are going to have major repercussions. And I think we're in a position right now to potentially prevent some of that from happening. But I think if the train, you know, moves a little bit farther out of the station, we're going to be in trouble. And it's going to be very difficult to backpedal from this, because at some point in time, the Board of Education is going to have to go to the town, and the town is going to have to fully fund the Board of Ed insurance, and we're not going to have the reserves, and we're not going to have things in play. And it's going to be a real hit to the town's taxpayers. So I think that's something that we just have to consider in terms of these deliberations. I mean, I don't know if we can make a decision tonight. I don't even know what decisions, you know, some of this is taken out of our hands a little bit. You know, to Scott's point, we don't have to take these cuts in health insurance. We can take them somewhere else. But, I mean, these are going to be really, really, really painful cuts, should we have to take them someplace else. And unprecedented, I would say, too.
Brian, would you like to add your thoughts to all the next?
Let's go on our whole point. Sure. I guess, just to sort of, to follow up, maybe close a little bit. I think it did, obviously, more conversation, and some decisions do have to be made, I think, going forward. The, it seems like, I mean, lots of questions are still, many of them were asked and answered, but there's still some of them out there that more conversations need to occur. But I would say, maybe perhaps the Educational Resources Subcommittee can get together, sort of try one more time, sort of hash all this out, understanding where people sort of fall and what their beliefs are, and make that a recommendation to the whole board as far as here's a good path forward. Because I do think that's the important thing is for us to figure out, this is where we are today, and what is our path forward in order to get us into a strong position, you know, the board, the district into a strong, comfortable position that we're all confident with. The conversations about taking the corridor below the twenty-five percent always make me very nervous for lots of reasons, as you know, and, you know, same here. So I think that the conversation that we've had is, you know, very honest and very, you know, thoughtful about all of the sort of potential directions to go in and potential outcomes if we don't think this all the way through and make the decisions that we're comfortable with. You know, I think the long-term thinking is important. And it's easy to take a short-term approach in some of these things. And that's where I do think we make poor decisions. I think we need to take our time and try to make decisions that not just for right now or this month, or, you know, even this fiscal year, but thinking three, four, five, ten years down the line, because, agreed, there are lots of things to be talking about. And this is a dominating force in our conversations over the last couple of weeks. And I'm so looking forward to Dr. Krentzey's presentation in a few minutes, to talk about learning and curriculum and instruction. So I would think perhaps maybe the Ed Resources Subcommittee can get together to have a conversation about, pull together all of the, I mean, the sort of sentiment that was shared tonight and the feelings that are here, and sort of put something forward. I think it will be a good path for us to follow.
Yes. Deanna?
Just to sort of, so that I can articulate maybe the sentiment that we all have, is that we would like the town to honor the agreement that we entered into last year. It's probably not appropriate to be sort of looking to change this at this time, and, you know, that's for next budget year, I guess. So I guess, I mean, if, you know, as a committee, I guess, I want to just make sure that that, sort of, the sense of the board is that we should be, you know, working to ask the town to sort of honor the agreement that was signed last year. I mean, is that?
Yes. Is that what everybody's feeling?
He's saying his name, because just because I thought he said that. So Thursday night, is that when they're supposedly deciding on their approach? Or is this going to be worked through with you before Thursday?
Thursday is the overall budget decision.
Thursday's the public hearing.
Right.
And they'll continue deliberations about the Board of Education.
About this.
April one is the vote.
Which is the following week. But I thought, I just remember them saying he was going to have a proposition on Thursday so that they could vote on the budget the following week.
Yeah, I think it'll be.
So it's like two weeks we're talking here.
So over the next three days.
Not even two weeks.
I think we'll be having some conversations with them, sure.
But it's not just, thank you, Deanna. As far as, just procedurally, the town council cannot add back to our budget.
Correct.
We need to have money added back to our budget. So I don't even know where to go.
Well, this is for discussion later, but the mechanism is the policy. So we have to, I think, fight for the policy.
The policy has the percentage, and has to be reimbursed according to what it says. Is that what you're saying? What it says, if they have to go back and do.
That would be the only mechanism to get money.
Yes. That would be a mechanism.
So a special appropriation?
Well.
Or to go back and?
Not via the, the policy was not a special appropriation. That was the suggestion.
No, I understand. But if we're, if the budget currently presented, proposed by the, by the Board of Finance, is with a million, one hundred thousand dollar cut in it. If they don't go back and reverse that, we have to go for, that's what I'm asking, is what procedurally is the next thing?
But we're not out of compliance immediately.
I understand it's a policy and telling them to live up to it.
We're not out of compliance immediately, so it's not going to happen.
So then we do have to go back for a special appropriation. All this really does, anyway, is kick the can down the road. They're taking the money out this year, and they're going to have to tax the taxpayer next year to replenish it.
If I could just interject, the policy has to be worth two point two million dollars, and then everything is okay for FY sixteen, if FY fifteen comes in as projected. If any interpretation, or any change, or no change but a different interpretation of that agreement results in a one point six value versus a two point two value, then there's a six hundred thousand dollar hole. That's where we are.
I'd also love to make a suggestion to the board that we take, start taking a look at a policy that the board writes, perhaps, about our insurance funds, so that we don't spend next year the amount of time that we have spent this year on this. Because I know all of us would so much rather be listening to curriculum than talking about insurance. So maybe we should be a little proactive on this ourselves and attempt to write a policy internally.
Good idea. Any other comments?
I guess my only other point is that, if, I agree with this, and we should, our first clarification should be whether or not this, this piece of paper is two point two million or six hundred thousand dollars less. So I think the next point that we have to figure out is when we're preparing our budget next October, next September, which is not that long far away, and we know we're going to be out of compliance the next year, do we have to add that money into our, how do we, how do we deal with that? And do we have to add that money into our operating budget so it'll replenish there? In which case, then we'll be looking at not just a one point one million dollar increase plus six percent to our line. We'll be looking at a one point one million dollar increase plus six percent, if that's what the claims increase is, plus whatever hundred thousands of dollars it is to replenish the reserve. And so I think that's, that's, see, that to me is the point where, if you haven't been following this conversation, and the taxpayers are looking at it, they're going to say, boy, the Board of Ed has really mismanaged the insurance. And, and, and so that, and I don't really think, I think it's been a discussion between the town bodies, and I think we need to have a discussion with the town bodies right now about how they're going to fill that hole next, you know, when we're preparing our budget for the next fiscal years. Because instead, otherwise, we have to come up with this massive increase.
Yes. And it's not smoothing it out to continue to do this.
Exactly.
Okay. Do you need any more to go on that? Thank you very much, Steve, for coming. Appreciate your help.
Thank you, Steve.
An apology to all of those of you who had to sit through that.
Well, it probably gives new meaning to your insurance policies now, as you think about it. At least you can see that we are, all of the town and the board are advocating, trying to make sure that that insurance is all there, so.
Stay healthy.
Stay, yes, please. Moving on to our next agenda item, which is the K-12 Curriculum Assessment Report. I didn't know if you wanted to start, or is it going to be Dr. Krentzey starting?
Sure. I'll just say a word or two. You know, as you can tell, we spend a great deal of time talking about many important things. But the single most important thing that happens in our school certainly is what happens every day in our classrooms between our teachers and our students. And that the curriculum instruction assessment that Dr. Krentzey oversees as our Assistant Superintendent is our core work. And so tonight's presentation works to share a little bit about the curriculum, how it's developed, and some of the strengths, some examples of that, and some of the handouts here, and talk about our assessment structures, both internally and externally. This is, again, the core of our work. It's exciting to have an opportunity to talk about it. A couple of meetings ago, we had a presentation in social studies, for instance, talking about those standards here. So Dr. Krentzey's taking a whole district global view of some of the assessments, some of the curriculum development process. And we have many of our experts who have been with us to hear about insurance so far tonight, who are ready to talk about their areas of expertise. And welcome, all of you. Thank you all for coming.
So we've asked all the healthy teachers to join us at the table here. And let me introduce them. Sitting here is Heidi DeCosta, who is our English Language Arts Department Chair at the high school. Next to her is Anthony Bloss, who is our Math High School Chair, Department Leader. Next to him is Zoe Robinson, who is our K through eight Math Coordinator. Glenda Green, our K through four Math Coordinator. Math. Oh, no, never. Never math. She's already got her bag of books. I was just trying to, you know, I was just trying to throw Glenda off a little, you know. I didn't want her to ask, what do you have on your nightstands for reading? You know, we're just trying to keep Glenda under control. But Glenda's not a math coordinator. Glenda's actually a reading coordinator. So I apologize, Glenda. Anita Charger is our five through eight Reading Coordinator at Saks Middle School, and Karen is our K through five Writing Coordinator. We also have Melinda Meyer, our Science Coordinator, and Mary Hannah, here in the audience, our K through eight Social Studies Coordinator. And I'm sure that you recognize many of the administrators sitting in the audience as well. So we certainly have a group of experts who are prepared to answer any questions that you present to us this evening. So my goal is really to just kind of start with a very, a brief overview of K through twelve. So we begin with what are the Common Core State Standards. And we've heard a lot about Common Core State Standards. They were developed by the National Governors Association Center for Best Practices and the Council of Chief State School Officers. And it was a collaborative effort by teachers, administrators, and elected officials. So the Common Core Standards are a set of K through twelve expectations for English Language Arts and Mathematics. And they were really designed to ensure all students are able to compete and succeed In two thousand and ten, Connecticut, along with forty-four other states, adopted the Common Core State Standards in Mathematics and English Language Arts. In two thousand and fourteen, Connecticut renamed the Common Core State Standards to Connecticut Core Standards. The standards were not federally imposed. Each state voluntarily adopted the standards and has the freedom to edit and modify the standards. The state of Connecticut has always adopted national standards in math and English Language Arts, and they've modified accordingly. So a great example of this was when you saw the social studies presentation about two weeks ago, where they really talked about how there was the national framework, brought it into the state framework, and then brought it into the local level of what we do with curriculum. The standards are not curriculum. The standards are truly that, a set of expectations for K through twelve students. So how do we use the standards here in Connecticut? Standards define what students in each grade level should know and should be able to do. And since New Canaan has always had rigorous expectations for all students, the Connecticut Core Standards have been informative rather than transformative in helping us shape our curriculum. Curriculum will always be designed at the local level. And we are very fortunate, because we have our expert teachers, curriculum leaders, and administrators who do all of our curriculum writing here in New Canaan. We're also very fortunate, because we have a lot of experts in a wide variety of content areas. So throughout the course of the last two years, you've heard presentations from CTE, VPA, World Language, Social Studies, Science. So we're always looking at all of our content experts to help us make the right decisions about curriculum. They're the ones that are constantly out there researching and trying to figure out the best methods to instruct our students. So when we took a look at the new standards in two thousand and ten, part of our thought was, are there things within our curriculum that we must revise? And some of the areas that we looked at in mathematics was looking at greater focus, coherence, skills, understanding and application, and emphasis on practices. So for example, when we looked at the greater focus, particularly in elementary school, one of the standards really talks about making sure that kids have a strong number sense. So it was going back into our curriculum and saying, in K through two, do the kids have concepts, skills, and problem solving related to addition and subtraction? Do they have that sound foundation? As you move into grades three and five, they build upon those concepts, and now you're moving into the concept, skills, and problem solving that's required in multiplication and division of whole numbers and fractions. And you can see the progression continuing on as we move up into the grades. So the focus was really to say, what are the strong foundational skills that must be in elementary schools in order for the kids to build upon those experiences six through twelve? So some of you might recall that we went back, and I'll talk about assessments in a moment, but just to give you an example of making sure that we have basic addition and subtraction fact checkpoints, making sure that we have computational sets, to making sure that kids all have these understandings. The next piece was coherence. So oftentimes, when we're looking at coherence, one of the major criticisms of the old standards is that oftentimes, children would talk about how the same things were taught year after year after year, and that they were not getting new concepts or skills taught to them. So what we did was, we went back and we really made sure, K through twelve, that we have skills and thinking that's built upon. So something that's taught in first grade is then built upon and taught into second and taught into third. And I'm going to give you an example of that working backwards from algebra in a moment. The next piece was the skills, understanding, and application. And it was really saying that all of those are really equally central and important to what kids need to know and be able to do. So they need to know their procedures fluently. They need to be able to develop a deep conceptual understanding, and they need to be able to apply their knowledge to solve problems. And then the following is the emphasis on practices. And you've heard that conversation and the talking about practices before when we've mentioned science. And they've done that cross-reference with you when we've talked about the mathematical practice standards, as well as the science practice standards. So when you're looking at those, it's really making sense of problems and persevering to solve them, and reasoning abstractly and quantitatively, and using appropriate tools strategically, constructing viable arguments. There are eight different criteria that we follow for the mathematical So how does this all look? Well, obviously, putting it up on a PowerPoint doesn't do it justice. So I did include in each of your packets, you will receive a full unit of study in algebra, just so that you have a clear understanding of the amount of work and depth that goes into one unit of study that's created. So the study that you're looking at is for an algebra course, and it is one unit of study within that algebra course, which lasts about four weeks. And so what you see here is that we identify our enduring understandings, our essential questions. We want, we decide what we want students to know and what we want students to be able to do. We cross-reference these standards, as well as mathematical practices. But ultimately, it's the teachers who create all the lessons. It's the teachers who determine the best way to teach. And it's the teachers who are sitting there thinking, what is the best way to assess our students? And I'll talk a little bit about how we go about that with district assessments. I wanted to circle back to the coherence in mathematics to give you an example there. So when you're looking at this example, once again, on the screen, I apologize, not as clear, but it's working backwards from algebra. So the end result is to create equations and equalities in one variable and to use them to solve problems. So we begin back in grade one, and we apply properties of operation as strategies to add and subtract. Then we skip to grade three. Obviously, there's concepts that are still taught within grade two, just giving you some examples of how we create this coherence. It's now solving two-step word problems using the four different operations, and representing these problems using equations with a letter standing for unknown quantity. So now you're beginning to see how they're beginning to put these algebraic concepts. We move into fifth grade, and it's really emphasizing that they must use parentheses and brackets and braces and numerical expressions, and evaluate expressions within these symbols. And then you can slowly see the progression into sixth, seventh, eighth, where you're solving linear equations with one variable. And then the algebra, it's creating those equation and inequalities. So it's just an example of how we would look at coherence, K through twelve, and making sure that we're building upon skills that are taught from one year to the next. that we're building upon skills that are taught from one year to the next. So we also had the opportunity to take a look at language arts. And we said, what are some of the concepts we've examined when looking at our language arts and revising our language arts curriculum? So the first is the real focus on evidence. And really, what we want to make sure is that students can truly use evidence from text to present careful analysis, well-defended claims, and clear information. So instead of asking questions that students might be able to answer from prior knowledge or experiences, which has happened, or to tell them to give us a connection to what they've read, now we really want children to answer questions that depend on their having read the text, and that they've done a very close read of that text in order to answer the questions. The next piece is the text complexity. So we know that students are going to be expected to read and comprehend increasingly complex texts. So one of the shifts is really looking at the nonfiction text material that we're providing, not only in K through five, but also on through six through 12. So one of the shifts that you've seen probably within our curriculum is more nonfiction reading, informational text reading. One of the other things was going back and looking at speaking and listening. And it was really important that we take a look at that because it's talking about that students must grow vocabulary, and that they must do this through conversation, direct instruction, and reading. That children should be engaged in small group conversations, and they should be able to listen and talk about the key point that a speaker is making. So that's part of something that we've gone back and integrated. And then the other big piece is the literacy in the content areas. And that's really going back to a little bit what Mary Hannah was talking about when we talked about social studies. And it's understanding texts in social studies or science that really require that unique set of skills. For example, reading a historical document is an integral part of teaching history. Our students need to be able to do that. So once again, I've given an example of a unit of study in reading and researching in fourth grade. I've provided the full unit of study for the Board of Ed members so that you can have a good example. But once again, it's going back to our understanding by design model, where the teacher are creating those understandings, essential, excuse me, enduring understandings, the essential questions, they're cross-referencing with content standards, and then they're making decisions about what are some of the teaching indicators that teachers will be working with. All of our teaching indicators really clearly go back to our enduring understandings. So we want to make sure that students will be able to understand that authors of informational texts usually have a stance or a bias that can be detected by the reader, or that many sources must be examined in order to fully understand a topic of research and study. One of the things that we really spent some time looking at, too, was really making sure that our reading and writing units were completely aligned. And I've given you an example of the writing unit that goes along with this research. So you can see that they're learning how to read research, how to find the main idea, all good concepts that we would want kids to understand, how to summarize the text, how to support their evidence with details. And then you see the writing document that gives you a side-by-side of how they then put that into a written research piece. So one of the things that we did was, we really spent some time aligning our reading and writing curriculum. Some of the frustrations that we heard from teachers over the years was that they might be teaching a particular genre in reading and a different genre in writing. And it would be nice if we could put those two together and make it an integrated language arts block of time. And that was really more the K through five perspective. Six through 12 has really always had that opportunity, but that's because language arts is taught in one block of time, six through 12. Where in elementary school, it was somewhat divided with a reading block and a writing block, and now it's been combined to a language arts block. So how do we know our students are learning? Assessment. Assessment should inform instruction. It should be multifaceted. It needs to be ongoing. It needs to be meaningful, and it's very useful to progress, monitor student growth. Certainly, assessment can take on many forms. It can screen children. It can diagnose children. It can be formative, and it can be summative. So we're fortunate in this district because we have a tremendous amount of district assessments that we utilize that help us to drive our instruction. Those district assessments, as you can see from the list in front of you, are given throughout the course of the year, and they are developmentally appropriate. So we know that in order for children to learn to read, they must have a strong phonemic awareness. They must understand that print needs to, you know, that the sounds come together to make words work. So they, what sounds do they hear at the beginning of words? What sounds do they hear at the ending of words? What sounds sound alike? All those rhyming, nursery rhymes, all those things bringing back memories? But that's really critical. We know that children that have a strong phonemic awareness is a strong indicator that they'll be ready to learn to read. The next piece that we teach is phonics. So we go back and we say, well, we know that phonics is the relationship between letters and the written language. It's the individual sounds and the spoken language. It teaches children that they use these relationships to read and to write words. So we know how children learn to read, so we instruct that, and then we assess it. The assessment helps us to determine what next steps we must do for students. So if children are struggling with phonemic awareness, then a teacher might spend time really working with that child on the auditory sounds that they might hear. Other things that we use in the area of reading are the developmental reading assessment. And that's given three times a year. And what that's very helpful for is it gives an identified reading level for children. So what happens is that, once they give the DRA, the teachers are able to identify the reading levels, and then they group their kids according to those reading levels. And in order for a child to move up from one level to the next, there's a tremendous amount of skills that have to be taught, and some things that we really take for granted. So you might be thinking to yourself that kids need to learn how to read with commas or quotation marks, that they need to understand simple dialogue and split dialogue, that sentences can carry on multiple lines, and sometimes can even go to the next page. And then certainly, as they get older, we start to look at text structures, themes, and keeping track of multiple characters. So we have identified what each level of kids, what kinds of skills do they need to learn in that level in order to get to the next level? And if they're not learning it, then it's our job to figure out how to get them to learn. So we use these assessments very carefully to drive our instruction. So you can see in kindergarten, first grade, and even second grade, it's really teaching kids to learn to read. We then start to make that transition into learning to read for meaning. And now you move into noticing that the DRA is still given, but now there's a written component. And now there's a nonfiction piece as well as a fiction piece. So we're asking kids to read both types of literature. Maybe they read nonfiction well, maybe they struggle with fiction, or vice versa. We also administer DRP and a reading assessment inventory, which helps us to determine, are they struggling with main idea or cause and effect? And then we also have pre- and post-writing pieces that are very unit-specific. We continue on into third and fifth grade, still giving our DRA with our written component. We're now adding in more comprehension passages and asking kids to answer in writing to those different comprehension questions. We introduce a blue ribbon, which is really testing kids on their editing and revising. Do they have the structures of grammar? And then it's really looking at the pre- and post-writing pieces. And this has been a shift for us because in the past, we've done a lot of narrative writing and a lot of narrative prompt writing. And now it's really looking at, can kids write an informational piece? Can kids write an argumentative piece, a persuasive piece? And it's introducing all of that and doing pre- and post-assessments to see if children have grasped those concepts. As we move into language arts, six through 12, I apologize, I should say six through 12, not nine through 12. Sixth through eighth grade, they're still doing their reading assessments. It's the comprehension assessments. Now they're looking more at fall and spring data. They have their pre- and post-writing assessments. They have their blue ribbon. And then you may have heard us talk about NWA. So NWA is a computer adaptive assessment that our students have been taking for about four years now, and it gives them scores in reading and in mathematics. So when the teachers are looking at that, they're looking and saying, okay, what do we have for reading for information, or reading literature, or vocabulary acquisition and use? They look at the results of those scores, and that's what helps to dictate targeted instruction that they may do within their classrooms. And then in high school, we continue on, and the high school English Language Arts Department has worked extremely hard to have common reading assessments and common writing assessments, and they are very strong with our writing portfolio. Mathematics, you'll see the same. We have fall, winter, spring benchmark checklists in kindergarten. And we've now started to introduce the addition and subtraction facts up to five for our kindergartners, doing some baseline and slowly moving them along and teaching them those strategies to solve addition and subtraction. As we move into first grade, we once again have our fall, winter, and spring benchmarks. They tend to assess what the kids have learned up to a certain point in the fall, and then assess what the kids have learned up to a certain point in the winter. And then the spring is more of a summative of what they've learned throughout the course of the year. We've also added in some exemplars, which are some very challenging problems that children have to solve, and it's multi-step, and they're putting, it's putting all of those concepts together to solve those problems. We move into second, third, and fourth grade. Once again, we're still doing our addition and subtraction facts in second grade, but as we move into third and fourth, it's really making sure that the kids have a strong understanding of those multiplication and division facts. And you'll see that we've now introduced computation sets as well. So you'll see that we have exemplars as well as our computation sets. The same moves into sixth grade, where we have our unit assessments that the kids are doing at the end of every unit, and then we've worked very hard to start getting common assessments that are really grade and course-specific. And then once again, we have the NWA math that's used, five through eight, but it's really giving us some more information about statistics and probability, and geometry, and operation, and algebraic thinking. It's a computer adaptive test. It takes the children out of a grade level. It also brings them down below a grade level if necessary, but it helps to give us some specific information which allows the teacher to make those targeted groups within their So we have all of this district assessment, and certainly, it's great to assess children, but unless you analyze the data, it's not worth it. So what we have is, we have response to intervention, and it's really important for us to meet as data teams. And we spend time looking at the data across a grade level. So it might be a group of second-grade teachers who are coming together after they've administered their DRAs, and sitting down and talking about the results. Who are the children that might still be struggling with particular skills? How do I address the needs of those students? And then who are kids that are kind of outliers, that might be really reading way above the grade level? And how do I address the needs for those children as well? This past fall, I had an opportunity, past winter, excuse me, to sit in math. Same scenario. They had just given their math mid-year. It was sitting down, looking at the results of the math mid-year, making decisions instructionally about what they wanted to do for students, and they were triangulating the data. Because we always remember that when you give summative assessments, it's just one piece of data. So it was interesting to sit there and listen to the teachers talk about how they've triangulated the data. And they go back and they say, well, I've been looking at the unit assessments, and maybe they didn't do so well here, but I have a lot of evidence based on all these unit assessments that they've done exceptionally well over the course of this time. So it allows them to say, let me go back, let me reteach, make sure there's not another issue here, make sure that it wasn't just a careless mistake, or whether there's something that I really need to dive more deeply in, and make sure that they have the concept very clear. So when we meet as a data team, we follow a protocol, and certainly, we create action plans, and we create SMART goals, which are specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-bound. And then we really spend some time talking about the units of study. So we go back and we say, okay, so let's take a look at the past units of study, and we really have conversations about, hmm, I'm wondering why everybody didn't do well with this question? Or, gosh, I'm noticing your kids did exceptionally well with that question. My kids didn't do so great. Let's talk a little bit about what you may have done instructionally in your class so that I can try some of those strategies in my class. The dialogue is very open with the teachers. They're all willing to learn in order to do what's best for kids. And then they start to say, okay, so now we're moving into our next units of study. Do we have the resources that we need? And how are we going to differentiate for the students that are sitting in front of us? Lot of planning goes into play for all of our teachers. This is also connected to our teacher evaluation and professional learning. And as you know, we are on a waiver from the state of Connecticut, and we continue to use our district assessments as a way to help teachers to grow. So in the fall, teachers are looking and creating self-reflection. They're looking at trend data about their student performance over time. They're looking about data about their instructional practices. They're identifying areas of strength, areas of weakness, questionings, wonderings, thinking about professional opportunities. They then create their professional growth plan, which often goes back into a very specific domain and indicator. So you might have a teacher who will say, I really want to focus in on questioning. How can I ask the right kinds of questions to get my students to think at a higher level? Or, if you may recall from the summer, those of you that were here, when Bob Stevenson really talked about his professional development plan in the area of student feedback. How can I give timely and meaningful feedback to my students that will help them to continue to grow? And that's part of the area that we would spend focusing, and the teachers would be researching it, sometimes in study groups, sometimes in an entire department, sometimes an entire grade level. They look at these during their PLCs. Sometimes we bring in experts to help us in these areas as well. We then also, in the district, have our summative assessments. So the Connecticut Mastery Test was, been in existence since 1985. And originally, it started off as a fall assessment for students in grades four, six, and eight. And then in 1995, they added the Connecticut Academic Performance Test, which was given in the spring of students' 10th grade year. And it tested students in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science. So, and Science was actually added, excuse me, in March of 2006. So we had our several generations of the CMT tests from 1985 to 2006. 2006, they instituted the Generation Four of the CMT. And it also related back into No Child Left Behind, when they were saying that children needed to be tested annually in grades three through eight and one grade in high school. And so that's where we came up with our spring assessments in those grades, starting in March of 2006. And then I wanted to just mention that is also when Science was added in. So for years, the CMT and the CAPT, it was all based on the state standards, and it was considered cutting edge. We were one of the few states that went beyond multiple choice, requiring our students to answer open-ended questions. And what was probably most frustrating was that the results usually didn't come back to us until the summertime. So the tests were given in March, the results would come back to us in the summer, and then we were looking at those results and saying, okay, did the children make growth from March to June? Is there anything that's here that's kind of glaring that we should be looking at more closely, whether it's through our curriculum, whether it's through our instruction, and how can we help children to improve? So as you know, the state standards have changed, and they needed to adjust the state assessment, which is when they came up with a Smarter Balanced Assessment. And that was a field test last spring, and it was administered to all students in grades three through eight and 11 as a field test. Field test was to test questions. And it was really for them to say, okay, so is this a legitimate question? Can it be utilized? And does it need to be thrown out, or can it remain? It was also a way for them to start creating a computer adaptive test. So in the field test, it wasn't computer adaptive, and that they knew that they wanted to move to a computer adaptive test. So the full implementation for the Smarter Balanced is this year for grades three through eight and 11. So we have begun our Smarter Balanced Assessment with practice tests up until this point, and tomorrow, our eighth graders will begin. So they'll be using computers, and we'll talk a little bit about the differences between the CMT and the CAPT versus the Smarter Balanced. So the CMT and the CAPT was a paper pencil test, and Smarter Balanced is a computer-based assessment. The CMT and the CAPT was grade level bound. The Smarter Balanced is computer adaptive, but I do want to mention here, it's still grade level bound, and that's based on the federal regulation. And that's based on the federal regulations that you only are supposed to be testing within that grade level. So they reach it to the far ends of one particular grade, and they reach it to the lower ends of that grade level. And there may be a couple questions that might be out of a grade level, but for the most part, it's still within a grade level. And I think original research had said that it was going to stretch beyond a grade level. And then they realized they wouldn't be able to do that, because you really are supposed to be testing what children know and are able to do within a specific grade level. We continue to give assessments in ELA math and science. And since there are not new adopted standards, in science, we continue to give the CMT CAPT to students in grades five, eight, and 10. And we've already administered those, and hopefully, will be packed up and off to the state before the end of the week, as I'm looking at some of my middle-school administrators. So they are ready to go. And as you can see, over with Smarter Balanced, we are only giving assessments in ELA or math. The new science standards haven't been adopted by the state of Connecticut, so therefore, they have not been integrated within this new assessment. Are the assessments still open-ended? They are. There's to be a combination of multiple-choice questions and open-ended responses that the children will need to answer in both areas, both mathematics and English Language Arts. Both assessments provide accommodations for children who have IEPs and 504s. What's interesting with the Smarter Balanced is they also provide universal tools for all students, and then they provide designated supports. What's been very powerful is the designated support is for our students who English is a second language. So what they've been offering to these students is that they can have something translated. They can have directions translated in their language. They can have dictionaries available to them. They are all part of the tools that are within the Smarter Balanced. We could also give a child an opportunity who might be struggling in the area of reading, who's not identified under special ed, who needs to have questions read to them in math. So it's just a different way. They might be in our RTI process. They might be receiving Tier Two or Tier Three instruction, but they need something to be successful in the area of math. The assessment's about the same. It's about seven hours for a student. That's what it was for the CMT. That's what it will be for the Smarter Balanced. It is untimed for all students. So part of the process that we've heard last year was, it might be challenging for kids to access the technology or to type. I have to say, I think one of the things that amazed all of us as adults last year was the ease in which the students took the field test. They had no problem working with split screens and rolling up and down and going back and finding the tools of how they wanted to highlight. They were very creative in finding the notepad and putting notes within their notepad and then pulling up the notepad the next day to be able to use to finish answering the piece that they wrote about or the research that they were reading, and they gathered notes. So it was amazing how easily, starting with third grade all the way up through high school, how they adapted to the technology. And giving them untimed, I think, has been helpful, although we did find last year that most kids completed it in the time that was allowed. Unfortunately, the results will still come back in the summer, so it will not be any quicker. And that's really because all of the open-ended responses are hand-scored still. So the company that scored them for the CMT is the same company that will be scoring them for the Smarter Balanced, and it's because they need to have an actual person reading those responses and scoring them. It cannot be done by a computer. Once again, there'll be state, district, and school data report it. They will report out the school performance indicators, the district performance indicators like they have in the past. And the hope is that there will be longitudinal data. Similar to the CMT and the CAPT, there would be longitudinal data eventually with Smarter Balanced as well. So the Smarter Balanced is just one summative assessment, but as we're talking K through 12, we can't ignore the advanced placement participation. So at this time, I have some numbers hot off the press that I thought I would share with all of you. Some of these numbers you saw in the fall, when Dr. Leduke did her presentation on advanced placement courses. But certainly, when we took a look at the number of courses offering, you can see that that has increased dramatically since 2013. And if you may recall, in 2015 is when we've added in the physics and psychology as an AP exam. You can see that our student totals in grades 10 through 12 has grown, and that our student enrollment in the AP classes has grown. And to date, we have 861 students who have signed up to take the AP exam. Whether they take the AP exam? No, that's not correct? Am I interpreting it wrong?
Students, we have 861 tests that will be administered.
Tests, sorry. Thank you, Dr. Lutzey. Total tests administered, excuse me. But once again, dramatic number increase from 694. And part of that is because we have, some of our juniors are in an honors English course who have signed up to take the AP exam. So we're very encouraged by that. And then certainly, the differing numbers has grown as well. Obviously, we won't have the other numbers to fill in until we actually give the AP exams. So they have not been given yet. And then obviously, we continue to give students, you know, students take SATs and ACTs. And in October of 2015, the SATs will actually be revised, and they'll be aligned to the Common Core state standards. So at this time, I'm here for questions, and all of them are as well.
Questions? Do I see a hand? A hand? Yes. Oh, Sherri.
Sure. That was very comprehensive, and thank you very much. It's really interesting to kind of read the newspapers in other states and other districts and to see that, you know, the Common Core is such a kind of a, you know, it's naturally causing a lot of anxiety. It's something new. But I think you made a really important point in our district, how the Connecticut's core standards are informative versus transformative, that in fact, we've always had very high expectations for our students, and we've always had standards in place. I think you provided, you know, some good examples of how we've benefited from these standards. For example, in the math, how we've really strengthened our coherent build-upons from year to year, and how we've been able to better align our reading and writing. But can you just maybe expand on that in terms of how you think we, as a district, our academic excellence has benefited from these standards? And on the other hand, just honestly, like where maybe we haven't seen as much value in the standards, if at all, if that's the case?
Certainly, I think, I think what we've spent time doing as we're writing our new curriculum units of study is really going back and saying, you know, are these standards already a part of what we're doing? And some of the things that we've had to shift to is what grade level some of these standards may be taught in. So it might be looking at that and saying, "Well, we need to move this back into first grade, and we need to reduce down slightly here, because it's a little bit more rigorous than what we may have been asking of our first graders." And I'll look to certainly our content experts, who could probably give you a specific example just like that.
Sure. Yeah, or even like a practical example, what this means to a teacher in the classroom, right?
Is it on? Yeah? Okay. So I was thinking about when you were talking about working backwards. So one of the, two of the changes that we've made at the high school level is in research, because one of the performance tasks on SBAK has a research-like component, where you look at different sources. And one of the changes from the CAPT is that texts can be anything from a graph or a chart to an article. So we do do two research papers in the junior year, one in social studies, one in English. We've done that for a long time. But we recreate, we reworked the scope and sequence, so that set of skills now begins in ninth grade, such as locating sources, evaluating sources, is a blog, a credible source, so that I wouldn't say that it was entirely motivated by SBAK, but it was looking at SBAK, helping us fine-tune what we already want students to do. And another example, very briefly, in case anyone else wants to piggyback on that, is adding informational or nonfiction texts. So that, for example, in ninth grade, we've always had literature circles, where in addition to core books like To Kill a Mockingbird, Romeo and Juliet, students choose. So we've worked very hard to include some choice books that are readable for ninth graders, that appeal to both genders, like Boys in the Boat, I Am Malala. We've really worked hard to look through things that are not just, "Let's throw in some nonfiction," but also benefit our students. So it kind of triggered a thoughtful revisiting of curriculum, and it does meet the SBAK standards, but it's not far off the mark from what we're, so we're not ignoring them, but we're also trying very hard to make them work for our students and conversations that were already in progress.
I'd really like to add to what Heidi was talking about, but talk about the little children, because so many times I hear that people are so nervous, because, "Oh, you're not going to read stories anymore, and you're going to force them to read nonfiction." Well, if you have any boys at home, you know how much boys especially love nonfiction and seek it out. And from kindergarten on, we're really giving, helping kids with strategies. You know, kindergarten teachers will have two books about, and they'll get them both out about the same topic. And the kids will talk about how the authors treated the topics differently and how authors have a different focus. And they'll talk about the author and say, "What kind of, you know, why do you think they wrote that book?" And, you know, it's so interesting. They start from the very beginning and are passionate about it, and they start doing research on their own. And they'll pick their own research topics, which they're so motivated about, because young children have so many interests, and they want to be able to explore them. And so we have two units in each grade of not, to explore informational text. The first one is really learning how to read it, you know, how to read the different text features, and looking at main idea and looking at details. And then the other one is exploring something that you're passionate about, and learning how to take notes and research it, and then present that information. And with younger children, it's sharing it orally with a partner. And we've been working a lot on that kind of sharing and organizing your thoughts, so you can share what you know with a partner. I was thinking, you know, with your discussion that you were having about insurance, you probably really could have used some of the lessons that we teach in reading and nonfiction. We teach kids how to read directions, how to read things that are sometimes not in our area, that may be a little bit difficult, but we teach them how to do that, that sometimes you're reading something that you really need to read, but it's a stretch for you. So we say, "Well, let's look at the vocabulary, and how can you figure that out?" And so I just think, I think it's been pretty great in that area, and there's, I think the joy is still there with our kids. And we're having, we're having fun with it, but it's also caused us to really stretch what we've been teaching. And it spirals. The Common Core standards spiral. And, you know, everything that we're doing is appropriate at the grade level, and it's building as each year, you know, as the children go through the years. So I feel, I feel really good about it. And I'm really talking about the standards themselves and how we've woven them into the curriculum. I think the kids have been quite, they've been challenged, but in a good way. I think it's been exciting. I have books in my bag in case you want any sample. But I know it's late, so I'll just leave them there for now.
Are there other questions? Scott?
I'm so glad when you, when you spoke of assessment, you spoke of the myriad of assessments that we do and didn't focus on the SBAC test. That said, I have a number of questions about the SBAC test. Can you speak to the SBAC's role in the graduation standards?
So similar to the graduation standards that we have in existence right now, where it's talked about that children have to hit a certain proficiency on the CAPT assessment, we do need to go back and look at the Smarter Balanced Assessment. And the guidance from the state is, yes, they do need to be part of graduation requirements. However, all of you may recall from last spring, when Dr. Lutzey did a presentation about how we have multiple ways in which children can reach those graduation requirements. So we are planning on coming back to the board to present those graduation requirements to all of you, and certainly, Smarter Balanced will be part of that. So the science ones still include the CAPT, and they'll continue to include the CAPT. But we do need to look at the English Language Arts as well as the Mathematics. And what we're thinking right now is that we're not going to be doing major revisions, but we're going to be pretty much removing the CAPT and putting in Smarter Balanced.
And that is, sorry, that's state-mandated?
It is. If I could just jump in for a brief minute. It's mandated under state statute that the high school examination is used as one criteria, but not the sole criteria for graduation. So just recently, I've been in conversation with other superintendents in Fairfield County, and we're talking about what makes the most sense in order to meet the requirement under the statute, to use it as one criteria, but also to ensure that it's not the only, the sole criteria. And when that came in, there was quite a bit of conversation about an exit exam at the time. And this was Connecticut's response to an exit exam, feeling that they, they did not want to put in one test, like Massachusetts tried to do and some other states tried to do, that students needed to get a certain score on for graduation, but they did want to set that baseline standard. So that's where, it needs to be a criteria, but you have to have others. And if you recall, as Jill mentioned, back in last spring, we created, we expanded the ways that students could meet that graduation standard in mathematics and in science. Because when we did a review of that, we saw the English Language Arts, and some of the others were pretty solid, but they looked a little bit thin. So we just wanted to be sure there were enough options for all of our students. So as the superintendents continue to have that discussion, you know, we'll bring something forward. And there's some conversation about there being some similarity between some like districts for us, so that there is some consistency in our approach towards this.
And it's equally mandated that be given in the 11th grade as part of the high school?
Right now, that's the grade that they have selected. So it was 10th grade.
Why? Why? I mean, is the, is the-
It's the content on the assessment.
It's the content in the assessment.
I guess. But, you know, it is the year that, and I have two 11th graders, as many of you know. It is the year that they, you know, they go through sort of the most rigorous academic time, stressful time in a lot of other ways. And it just seems to me that it would be easier somehow to, I don't know, find a different time to give that to them.
And educators continue to have conversations about that. So we understand that junior year is a demanding year.
It's sort of rhetorical, why? All three of them are rhetorical. The last kind of question about the test is, can you talk to data collection on the test? We get some emails from concerned parents about data collection, personal data, as well as the results data. What's kept? How long is it kept for? Who's it, who can access it? Yada, yada.
So there's, first of all, there's a wonderful handout that I will certainly make copies for all of you that is on the state website, that really talks about the data protection and privacy. And it talks about what the state of Connecticut does with all of the data. And when you go through it, you know, it really does talk about that they're not going to be collecting any new data on our students. It's similar to what they've collected on the CMT and the CAPT in the past. So there's always been a state warehouse of data on how children performed in the CMT and on the CAPT. It's, you know, it's been there. It's longitudinal. It's, it's kept in a database. And that's what the state of Connecticut would continue to do with Smarter Balanced. So certainly, as you look through the handout, and certainly, Dr. Lutzey, feel free to add in anything at this time, too, but they're not collecting social security numbers, they're not collecting any of that personal identifying information. Everything that they have on our students is in our state database. So basically, when a student registers for the new Canadian public schools, they become part of our state database. They are issued a student identification. And the only time they're removed is when they withdraw from the Canadian public schools. And if they go to another district within the state of Connecticut, it's easy for them to pull that child's file up again, and now they've entered it- to pull that child's file up again and now they've entered into another district. Certainly if there's anything you'd like to add, Dr. Lutzey?
Sure. I guess that students are put into the state database from kindergarten on. And even if they're in a publicly funded preschool, you know, they would go into that database. And they're assigned an SASID, we're calling it, State Assigned Student ID, SASID. And that number is sort of how the state keeps track of the students going through. The, the information we have is, you know, the data that's being collected by Connecticut is not different than the data that was collected under the CAPT and the CMT, as Dr. Karanti shared. There is, there are concerns around data security for, I think, student data as long, as well as our financial data and everything else that sort of exists in a cloud somewhere. I know that the, reading through the protocols that are being followed, they do, they are taking some safeguards. I don't, I'm not a data privacy expert around those things. But I do know that we, when the data is available for us, for instance, for the CAPT and the CMTs of the past, you know, it was all through an online portal that we would log into. We would download the scores from the online portal, work with them, learn what we can learn with them, generate our reports. And that's what fed into the reports that we would then share with you. The, I imagine that we'll be accessing this data, these data, the same way through this online portal as we go through and do it. Again, there are pretty significant protocols and data protection efforts that seem to be underway, as I read through some of the documentation there. But this is a first step into this. The fact that students are taking it electronically, I think, makes people nervous in part versus taking it on paper. But it's important to know, and people may not know, that the, the CAPT and the CMT that was taken on paper was all put into, all of that was put into the database as well. So there's so many things that are similar, certainly some concerns. And we're learning to become data privacy experts in some of our reading, but it's very, it's complex.
And my last question is, we used to get SAT results. We used to see them in the aggregate. And I may be leading with my chin here a little bit in that I do tend to miss a meeting or so. Are we seeing those for the past? Yeah, can we?
When Dr. LeDuke shared her presentation earlier, we had some of that, but I'm certainly happy to share that.
I understand. Thank you.
No, I'm happy to share.
No, I knew, you know, it's a possibility.
Let me go down and ask the other side. Sangita.
You've got some phenomenal graphs and comparisons. I mean, anytime there's a change, it always brings up a lot of questions. And I really like this comparison to having the, what we've had in the past, the CMT CAP test versus smarter balance. And I really recommend anyone in the audience to, I think we'll post this up on our, on our website, as well as the, the other information handout that you're going to be giving, so people can kind of see what the policy is at the state for the data privacy issues. But it's also nice, you know, summary of just saying that, you know, this is a very similar timing, so we're not adding more testing to schedule, because that's always a question, it's like, are we adding another test or not? And it's really just replacing what we've had in the past with the new system to go along more with the, with the more rigorous type of demands from, from the new standards. It's also great to see, you know, about how much time people have and, you know, the fact that it's just the computerization that's very different, you know, print versus the digital aspects. And again, as you've already, you know, in Scott's question covered, that, you know, the data collection is the same thing. It's just now a different test you're collecting the data from. So it's, it's a wonderful piece of table to have, just to kind of, it's a great summary. But as Scott mentioned, too, that, you know, this is not the only assessment that we do. And so I did have a couple of questions just about the other assessments that we do, you know, throughout the year. And, you know, you mentioned even like the elementary level, you have the DRA and such of that. And I know that it stands for the Development and Reading Assessment. But just if you can tell, like, you know, how those assessments are very different than, you know, having the standard rights test and stuff, of what they do in some of these types of assessments that go on throughout the year that we're using to look at the whole child and see what their needs are.
So I'm happy to answer that, but I'm happy to deflect it over to Glenda, because I know Glenda does love to talk. So I'll fill in any, I'm kidding, Glenda. I'll fill in any blanks.
The DRA is an assessment that's given one-on-one with the teacher and the student. So the teacher really, especially with younger kids who aren't doing the independent reading piece of it yet, the teacher gets to take a running record, listen to the student read, and also just watch them, watch their reading behaviors. So the teacher really gets a great idea of, you know, they know their students really well. There are comprehension questions that are asked. So it is not only looking at fluency. And by fluency, it's looking at accuracy, but also intonation and the reading rate, you know, whether they're doing it at an appropriate rate. And it's looking at comprehension as well. And what's, what I love about the DRA, and I think I showed this, I forget when we did our last assessment presentation, but they have a focus for instruction. So that after you fill out the rubric that, where you show the student's strengths and weaknesses, then the teacher can go straight to the focus of instruction and look at what they should be doing next to help that particular student. As kids get older, they, they write answers, which is, you know, and that, we debated that a lot when we first started doing the DRA, because we thought, oh, we want to know how they read. And this, you know, maybe this will come, you know, it'll bring down their score in some way. But really, it's been very good. It's been a good compliment, you know, because they have to really get their, collect their thoughts and answer in writing. It also has, in the very beginning, a survey, so that you can really look at children's attitudes about reading. With little children, with kindergartners will say, well, what is your, actually, we rephrase this now, it's, well, what's your favorite book? And we found that there were some really serious children who would really debate that internally. And they, and they would get stuck because they thought that if they didn't pick their very favorite, that the answer would be wrong or something. So now we say, well, you know, one of your favorite books, just to see, you know, if, if they have, have been reading or been read to and just have a sense of, of their own likes and, and, you know, what they're excited about. So I think it's a really comprehensive assessment. And then it, it really focuses our instruction, which, and also gives us information about the reading level that children are on. I just had a discussion with second grade teachers about some of the levels that kids are in. And we were talking about getting them up to the next level and some of the things that they needed to do. They needed to be able, for instance, to track a story across chapters. It was very important for them to be able to hang on to it and understand that you're tracking it, you know, it's not just a quick, you know, story. You'll continue it. You'll put it down and then pick it up and, and continue it. And it goes across. So you have to be able to follow that. There was also, we wanted to look at time. And what, the children need to be aware of when time changes in a story, when there's a flashback, for example. We were looking at one of the books that was really on a, I forget what level, but it was a, around mid-second grade level. And the boy who was the main character would flashback, he was a, a fourth grader who would flashback to when he was in kindergarten. And, and then he would go back to the present. Well, for a second grader who's reading that book, that can be very confusing unless we really teach them how to track that. So there's just so many things that, as we look at the different levels, we realize that it gets even more complex as, as they move up in the levels. You know, they really, it's been very interesting for us. We've really been emphasizing that this year, to be more thoughtful and planful about how we teach kids to move on. So I don't, I don't know if I've answered-
You do, yeah. Because it's just kind of nice to hear, too, because all the different assessments, they're not just, you know, one type, like we have on the computer, there's this component where there's interaction with the teachers. And I know that she also has this NWEA, which is a computer. So how's that kind of also prepare the kids to do a computer testing? And is that done once a year or is it?
Certainly one of the middle school representatives.
Right now, the NWEA is given in the fall of each grade, five through eight. And we use that data and compare it with the other information that we have. And we could look at literature, information, and vocabulary. So, and it's very interesting to see, some students will be stronger in one area than the other. They may be a stronger nonfiction reader than they are when it comes to tapping into literary skills. So that could help us to target instruction and to have different groups based on what students need.
And the questions that are on that, is that created internally just for our district or is that a state?
No, that's, that's a national assessment.
National assessment.
So it's, it's been normed to national standards.
That's what the ends were. Okay. Great. And then, you know, I had a question, but, you know, it is important to analyze the data. At what level is, is the data analyzed? Is it teachers individually looking at their classes? Is it the department chairs that are looking at it as overall for the curriculum?
So our data team start as early as kindergarten. So in the fall, you might see a group of kindergarten, kindergarten teachers looking at phonemic awareness or phonics assessment that they've done on children to help identify some skill areas that might need to be taught. And then it goes right up through, all the way up through eighth grade. As we move into the departments at the high school, they too have data team meetings, but they look slightly different because of what we're requiring students to do at the levels. So there is conversations and they have those common assessments that they can always go back to look at and to have conversations. But if you remember, really, response to intervention, it's really trying to capture children and help to close any instructional gaps for those children. So it's very important that we have a real strong RTI process in place in those primary grades, so that we can try to capture children who may be having difficulty learning through our general education instruction and may need to have phonics taught in a more systematic way or a different way. So that's really why we have RTI, is to really help say, so what can we do to help make sure that the students are good mathematicians and, and good readers? And what kinds of skills do we need to do that? We're also continuing to look at all of our screening devices as dyslexia becomes a new classification under special education. So it's really going back and saying, what are the red flags that occur? And how do we screen for those red flags? And how do we do more diagnostic assessment for some children that might be exhibiting those red flags? So the universal screening is given to all kids. That's what we do. That's how we assess if they're making connections and doing their sentence dictation and picking up all those skills. But then if we need to probe further because they're just not making those connections, we might do a little bit more diagnostic assessment to probe further to say, is there specific skills that we want to teach them?
And then my last question was just with the AP results here, that just got hot off the press. And it's great to see that, it seems from what I'm gathering from this, is that, you know, we've got more students, a certain amount of students just taking more AP tests, so that the AP test, number of tests is increasing. And we've had a general increase in the number of different students taking the AP tests. But, and we have maybe about a third of our, our students now taking an AP course? Is that fair to, from what I'm looking at the statistics here? Is that 370 or 900?
This year. Right. And you want to look at it year by year because, you know, as they go through, and that's students 10 through 12. What I, what I like about this and looking at these data is that it just shows that the efforts of the board over the last couple of years and the administration of the high school and others to sort of look at this and work to expand those course offerings, that it seems to be having an impact on the number of students that are, are taking the courses. So I think that was one of the goals a few years ago when we began to bring in some new courses for students to take. Looking at the numbers here, you can, you see the trend upward in sort of the number of tests that are taken each year and the number of students that are taking those, those tests. And I think that sort of speaks to opening up more opportunities for, for more students to get involved. So our work's not done, but I think it shows that where those efforts are moving in the right direction, providing more opportunity for more students. So I think it's great.
Thank you.
Questions on this side? Oh, sorry. I was, I was going back and forth. Other side gets a chance. Allison, then we'll be right back.
Can you speak a little bit to the frequency and the process of evaluating our assessments? You know, how often do we change our assessments and how do we evaluate them?
Well, we're in the process right now of looking at some of the assessments that are being required of, of students in K through three. The state has put out some assessments that can be given through technology. And certainly, we've really been taking a cautious look at that to say, okay, so if we were, what would we give up? And part of what we would give up is that teacher sitting with that student and listening to them read and be able to talk about the behaviors of that student as a reader. We always are looking at the screening devices that we're utilizing. Sometimes it's driven by a new classification like dyslexia, which I sat with all the reading specialists last week and said, okay, so this is going to be a new classification. What are the screening devices that we have? Do we feel that these devices are, are sound? Do we feel that we need to be exploring other devices that we're going to be utilizing for our students? Common assessments in math are probably tweaked every year to some extent. Minor revisions, and certainly Zoe or Anthony can talk about that. Sometimes it's because something is being taught differently within that sequence. Sometimes it's because we realized that we needed to, to norm a new assessment and take a look at the standards that are within that assessment. And sometimes you have to throw a question out or you have to add something in. So that's part of the curriculum writing. That's part of all that we do when we're trying to figure out what is the type of assessment that we want to do to measure the student growth. So I would have to say that annually, those questions come up through curriculum writing, through conversations with all the department chairs, through conversations with all the curriculum leaders. It's the ongoing conversation. It's staying current on research and what's out there and are there other devices that we can use? But I have to say that we're also very cautious because we know that when we give a DRA, we know that we're getting a reliable level of, so that we know how to instruct our kids. We know what a reliable grade level reading is for a second grader or for a fourth grader or for a fifth grader. And right now, that, that reliability is very important to us.
Thank you. Other side. Penny.
I had a question, really directed to the high school. One, I just wanted to, I agree with Scott. I couldn't believe they picked 11th grade to pile on to those students. So I'm glad that you're still continuing to have conversations. And maybe the students are just, students are so adaptable, that did seem kind of an unusual choice to me. But with respect to assessments, you know, we have a lot of K through eight coordinators in our district. And I've, what I've wondered from time to time is, how do we, the functions that those very talented individuals are performing on a K to eight basis, how are we handling that same kind of task and that overall look and the progression of the student from year to year at the high school level? You know, if you're, if you're an AP level student, you kind of get checked via all the AP tests you start to take sophomore year and up. But, you know, only about a third of the students take AP classes. So I was just wondering how we, how we dealt with that.
We have our small PLC groups. We've created groups, basically covering most of our Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II courses. And we meet once a cycle to discuss not only what we're doing generally, but specifically per student, how kids are doing, what's worked on assessments, what hasn't. So that kind of stuff's going on regularly.
Well, I would just throw in just that a cycle is eight days. So it's not-
Eight school days. So every week, about a week and a half, once per week and a half, we're talking.
Right. So I would say also that, that the role of department chair is analogous to the coordinator on the elementary level. So I am responsible to make some of those decisions. We meet in a curriculum leadership team to talk about alignment. And then I go back. And we have teams also in ninth and 10th grade, because that's where a lot of the foundational skills. And we have assessments, both reading and writing, that address that. We do work not only in the team, but as a department to calibrate. So that if we decide that identifying a theme is important in ninth grade and identifying complex themes across texts is important in junior year, that we spend some time around our assessments, creating, looking at data and calibrating to make sure we're looking at the same, we're determining the same information when we look at students' work.
Thank you.
Sure.
Deanna.
I have a couple of questions. The first being on the assessments and then I have some general standards questions. But on, can you speak to the cut score that was set, I guess, recently by, by SBAAC and sort of how as a district, we're feeling about that and, you know, maybe strategies for communicating that after testing?
Well, what we know from the state of Connecticut is that each state can establish what they consider to be the achievement levels. So each state will determine what their achievement levels will be on the smarter balance. So the difference that you'll see here is they've moved it into four levels. So they have a level one, a level two, a level three, and a level four, which is slightly different- different than what they've done with the CMT and the CAPT in the past. So that was on a five-level scale. So you can see that that's already going to make a change in how we're looking at data. And so they're saying that three is that cut score, which would have been the old goal in the CMT, which would have been Level Four. So in CMT, it would have been you had to achieve a Level Four or Goal, which is the same CAP, and the same for advanced goal would go into Five. So here, they're saying the goal is going to be basically a three and probably achieving above that would be a four. Obviously, we're still waiting to receive all the details from the state of Connecticut as far as how those reports will look. We know that there's going to be claims. We know there will be one overall score that the children will receive in English Language Arts and in Mathematics. We've had an opportunity to look at those achievement levels and try to work backwards once again, looking at the standards because everything does relate directly in with the standards and working our way backward.
If I can just, I'll just very quickly piggyback on that. This is a topic that has had quite a bit of discussion because of concerns. In the past, the CAPT and the CMT proficiency score was a three. So proficient was the state goal. That's what other schools, that was sort of the minimum score they could get. New Canaan chose to have four goal as its sort of essentially meeting goal, that goal. That was the graduation requirement in order to meet that going forward. So we were always above. We typically would have anywhere between 96 and 99% of our students each year make it to three, depending upon what the topic was. Certainly the CAPT, I can't speak knowledgeably of the CMT, but I imagine the performance was relatively similar. The, so there is some concern as a new assessment comes in around that cut score, you know, as we look at it. So when, as those results come back, you know, until we have some longitudinal data to be able to make, draw some comparisons and make some decisions, it's, you know, we're unsure where it's going to fall out. But as that comes back to our district, then if the results of the assessment are different than other data points, and you heard that the sort of robust system of assessment that we have, if say Smarter Balance wasn't aligned with what our other assessments tell us about, you know, our students in our schools, then, you know, we would weigh it accordingly as we use it to make educational decisions. So I think it's, so I know that it's, as we build into a new system and we, it's sort of unproven, and in some states, they've set the cut score in such a way that significantly more students did not meet goal than had with the previous assessment system. In Connecticut, we're not sure if that's going to be the case and how it's going to play out. Certainly, listening to our curriculum specialists here, I don't think we could be any better prepared for what's to come. You know, it's, you know, we take it one step at a time. And it'll be an iterative process, you know, just as each year as we took the CMT and the CAPT, we got better with it. And as we learned about it, we learned more about, it informed our instruction in various ways. I'm sure this would do the same thing.
Okay. And then since this is, this is more of a standards question, but since I have all of you here and I'm going to take advantage of having all of you here, I would love for you to address some of the misconceptions that are out there around the standards. And so I guess the first question I would have is sort of, a lot of us have probably seen videos about in math, in math. The two biggest things that I see out there are, one, our students will not be able to reach beyond, will not be getting to Algebra I in eighth grade under the new standards. Could you?
Well, algebra starts in kindergarten, so they're doing lots of algebraic reasoning all the way through the primary grades. I think what's important to note is that we differentiate for all of our students based on where they are. So we don't just teach the standards in a specific grade level and say that you're finished. So a teacher has the ability to construct her groups based on whether they need to differentiate down in scaffold to bring that student back up to a grade level or look forward to the progression of the standards and say, what's coming next in the standard that might the student is ready for and differentiate up. It's not impacting currently our curriculum and what we are offering students and we're definitely offering them multiple opportunities to expand on what they know. We don't have a cutoff point to say, you are done learning, so you have to wait till the following year. That's not how we operate. And we always look for real-world applications to help and stretch and help them be problem solvers and thinkers in mathematics. So at this current point, I would have to say we don't have that. They won't get to Algebra I.
And then again, in math, you know, sort of we've probably, many of us have seen the videos out there with, you know, sort of the math problem that, you know, most of us could solve in a, you know, one or two steps and, you know, the parent being very concerned because, you know, under Common Core, they're supposed to have a hundred-step process. Could you address that kind of conversation that's out there?
So luckily in New Canaan, that hasn't really been a shift for our students and for our teachers. A lot of those processes have been incorporated into our curriculum. But what we're trying to do is to move away from the mnemonics or the procedural steps of a problem and have students understand conceptually what we're asking them to do. We're asking them to be flexible with their numbers and their thinking and to really understand place value and how numbers work. And a lot of those steps that we've seen laid out for students are the steps of the learning. However, it does become very automatic and fluent for students. And it's not about how many steps to get to an answer, it's just really understanding the concepts behind those steps. What does four in 42 really mean? It means four tens. And I think it's really understanding the conceptual foundation and not so much the process. We do offer computational fluency parent sessions at each elementary school and we did touch upon it at the district presentation in October. And we will continue to provide opportunities to work with parents to kind of help them through the process to better understand it.
And then, and then just finally, because I'm not going to leave, I'm not going to, but Language Arts go without their little question. We also hear, you know, that the amount of literature, like classic literature that's going to be taught is going away. It's all going to be nonfiction.
It's true. No. It's hard to see if everybody was still awake. Okay. So when Connecticut Core talks about the amount of nonfiction, they're talking about across a day. So we're not going to, we have not substantially changed the English curriculum nine through 12, but Jill referenced working across disciplines and that in social studies, in science, students need to understand academic vocabulary. So that's the, in math, one word may mean something and in English, it references something else. So that understanding of how to read in each discipline will be spread across the day. And so essentially, they are reading more nonfiction. And the other thing to consider is that as students move up in the curriculum in junior year, for example, in English, we read more nonfiction because we're working toward research and there are primary documents because it's based in American literature. So, but think of it more as across a student's day, we really want to work toward the same goals and fluency in reading and writing in all disciplines.
You mentioned classic literature also. And one of the interesting things about the Common Core is that they really have pointed us back to classic literature, to fables and myths and legends and folklore. And this has been, so we've really wanted to make sure that all of that is in the curriculum. And they've referred to, they've really wanted the kids to have the vocabulary that you would have to know what terminology from the myths means, for example. What does it mean if something's a Herculean task or that someone has an Achilles heel? So it's almost pointed us back toward that, which I think has been great.
Yes, Scott?
One more question. The, last year, we field tested the Smarter Balance test. Is there any value to the data from that?
We have not received any results from the state of Connecticut in regards to that data. I think one of the areas that they talked about is that there were questions that were thrown out. So you could have had a performance task that may have been given to a group of third graders at East School, different performance tasks that was given to a group of third graders at West School, and they decided that the performance task that they gave to the third graders at East School was unreliable and it wasn't a valid test question and it was thrown away. So to try to report data just didn't seem to make sense on the field test. I think it was really a true test of the test. So it was really looking at what are the test questions and what are test questions that will continue to move forward and what are test questions that are going to get thrown away? So to try to aggregate that data and give it out to districts, I think the state realized that that just didn't seem to make sense.
All right. So given that and the need to evaluate, self-evaluate, we have no longitudinal data from last year. We'll have no, none from this year or, you know, until, so we're going to go a number of years before we have any real comparative data.
And I think that's why it's so important to continue to make sure that we have reliable district assessments that we know give us valid understanding of where our children are performing and help us to drive our instruction. And that was part of what I really wanted to share this evening with all of you is the robust system of evaluation and assessment that we have on our students. The CMT and the CAPT has always been just one data point. And it's always been after the fact and we're looking at it and we're looking to say, are there tweaks that we need to make to curriculum? Are there tweaks that we need to make instructionally? It was criterion reference, so it was easy to look at the data and say, okay, so we need to work with this child on place value or we need to work with this child on probability. So it gave us that kind of specific data and we're hopeful that we'll receive similar data from Smarter Balance.
I think that, Jen?
So I just want to thank all of you so much. It's so impressive learning how you teach our kids. It's really impressive, so thank you and Jill for putting this together. So, you know, as Scott said, we're getting, we've gotten emails of parents that are very interested in all of this. And I know that you're, you know, we're going to have this on the website, the presentation, hopefully like in the next 24 hours. But also you're doing some meetings this week because it's going to be the same presentation at the schools this week?
So we are, we'll be at the high school tomorrow and we are doing them grade level specific because we'd like to make sure that we're answering questions that pertain to parents of students that have children within high school. And then we'll be doing Saks Middle School on Wednesday and Elementary will come together for a presentation at South Elementary on Thursday. And so Dr. Lutze and I will be out there talking with parents, but as well as our curriculum leaders. So we've asked them to join us as well because I think they can answer specific questions on what's happening particularly in a classroom and can draw those examples right away because they're living it.
Can I go back just for a minute because Jen was reading my mind? You quickly went and spoke about what, how parents could re-watch tonight if they wanted or to show this to someone else. Speak for a minute about the new site and where they can find the tomorrow or the day after within 24 hours.
Definitely. Well, I'm hoping that maybe we can get something on the district site, just stating these dates on there and then if...
It's already there.
It's already there. Perfect. But you can go under the Board of Ed, under District, and then you tab down to the Board of Ed and you look under Presentations and you can just, you know, drop Jill Crenti, you know, and the date and it'll pop right up or just probably Jill Crenti Curriculum. And it should pop up.
Anybody who missed it tonight, or if you want to hear again a part of something that they were interested in, they can go back and find it. The meetings, I will be giving the, the idea again, just as Dr. Crenti's mentioned, is for parents to be able to come at the different levels that they have children. And of course, if they have multiple children, they can go to all of the different presentations and just to make sure they are online. But tomorrow, Tuesday, the 24th, 1:30 at New Canaan High School in the Wagner Room. And Wednesday, the 25th, at 11 o'clock at Saks in room 102. And Thursday, the 26th, 1:30 at South in the cafeteria room. So we hope that parents who are not able to come will be able to make those meetings. And because you've done, just as Jen had said, a wonderful presentation and very helpful for all of us. Sherry?
I just want to expand on the communication because we've made a concerted effort to really communicate this information out to our public and our parents. The website, I just want to encourage all of our parents, hopefully, you know, the hundreds that are at home watching us or who listen to the replay, that our website is always a great source of information. And in addition to the Board of Ed section that Jen mentioned, there is a curriculum tab and under the curriculum tab, there is an assessment section with an SBAC Q and A. So there's a lot of information right there. In addition, we have communicated via email with parents. We've communicated with the newspapers to make sure that have this information. So we really have made a concerted effort. We want our parents to have this information. And certainly, if they have questions and they can't attend one of the sessions that are coming up, they can always contact Jill or a Board of Ed member and we'd be happy to answer their questions.
And I do have to say that the principals and the assistant principals are fielding questions daily.
Right, great.
And I don't want to go without acknowledging them and all of their efforts. They truly have a good understanding of all that I shared this evening and have been an incredible resource to parents. And they have really been spending a lot of time answering parents' questions and meeting with them and explaining how this all fits in. So I do encourage people to contact their building administrators as well because they are, first of all, they know their children and they can connect right to their children and they know the information. And they've, they've been wonderful in fielding the questions that have been coming into all of them as well.
I think that's particularly welcoming given that we have heard some people say that, you know, parents that are working can't go to these day meetings, knowing that they can get to a building administrator and get their questions answered and their concerns addressed, I think is great. Thank you for doing that.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you to all of you.
One last question.
Yeah, and I just, just if you could give, because I know there's also a question, you know, people have kids at different grade levels and just overall, just a summary of like the Sbacks, what grade do you do it? When is it testing? Because people, even like in 11th grade, they're like, since it's not like the CMT where it's all just one particular day, it's spread across, when do they start preparation? When do they do it? It just a quick...
Sure. For three through eight, 60% of the instructional year needs to have taken place. So the window for the Smarter Balance for grades three through eight starts on March 18th and ends June 12th. So because we are using technology and we don't have 1,300 devices and then another, let's say 300, 600 devices available, we kind of spread out the windows and make it manageable. So those have been coming home from the buildings and letting people know when they'll be testing each of those grade levels. There was a parent letter that went home. So Saks will be trying to get their eighth graders tested before the April break and then they'll be moving into seventh, sixth, fifth. Elementary students will be starting probably around April 20th. And it's kind of spread out over two weeks because we also have kindergarten orientation that's also within that time period. So we don't want to be testing children when kindergarten orientation is going on as well. So, and also, we recognize, we set up a very similar schedule to what we did for CMT. So we didn't go straight five days of testing third graders. We would do two subtests one week, three subtests the next week. And that's pretty much how we've designed the Smarter Balance assessment to be given. So it's a subtest one day, another subtest another day. Children sit for the same amount of time that they did for CMTs. It's about 60 minutes. 11th grade becomes a little tricky because 80% of the instructional year needs to have taken place, which means the window for juniors does not even open until April 27th.
Thank you for that overview.
So the letters that Dr. Crenti referenced are also available on our website, the letters from each of the buildings with information about dates and what have you. You can also get those there.
Well, we thank you very much for coming and it's, we realize that you need to be early to school tomorrow, so please go ahead.
And they need to stay healthy.
Yes, please. Absolutely. Our next item on our agenda is our statement of accounts. Ms. Harris?
Well, in an effort to be brief, since it is 10 minutes to 10, you've had some wonderful educational discussions. I actually brought with me the January statement of accounts because last month, it seemed to be very helpful to the board to have a point of comparison. So let me just jump right to the bottom line. And you will notice that there's about a $20,000 difference, $20,000 of less deficit I'm projecting for the end of February than I did for January. So that's the thumbnail sketch. You'll notice that there's some pluses and minuses in terms of balances. Again, these are estimates and so we're seeing that the surplus in salaries is down by about 20,000. The deficit in facilities is down by about 20,000. You see that other purchased services is also down by about 20,000. 20,000. But you can see there's pluses and minuses going on here. The 20s go one way or the other. I can go into more detail if you would like me to. However, let me stop there and see if there's any questions. The one caution that I'd like to tell you about is that we have had an incredibly stressful winter on our facilities. So I am not at all confident that that reduced deficit is going to hold, because as we start thawing out, there are going to be issues that we must address. We have sidewalks that have been heaving. Bob has been having his people paint edges of sidewalks with orange paint. We've got all kinds of different bits and pieces of things, ice dams, you know, all kinds of things. So I just want to alert you to the fact that stay tuned for coming attractions on facilities. You'll be hearing much more on the March Statement of Accounts. And all of you have, or several of you have asked about, how can I become more accurate in terms of salary projections? Right now, we're in the process of working towards a go-live date in our new HR payroll system. It's targeted for the April 15th date. Again, we have staff working furiously. Gross numbers continue to look great. We seem to be having, struggling with the state tax tables. But again, we will do another parallel for the March 30th payroll. If it's a go, we'll move forward. If the nets don't tie, then we will continue to use ADP, because we will always do the right thing. So it's kind of a brief update. The plus on moving forward is, of course, with this new system, salaries are encumbered. And that would be a wonderful thing, given the fluctuations as we see pluses and minuses moving through the salary accounts. So again, we're making progress, whether we'll hit our deadline or not. You have to work quarter by quarter.
Any questions?
In payroll. You just don't do any, because you need to have 941s filed with the IRS and the state and all. So it's a quarter by quarter issue, but people are working really, really hard in both offices.
Any questions?
I just had a question. I noticed that we have the balance now at zero, and that you're expected to get the excess cost grant. Has that been received, so that way it goes to zero, or is that just still expected?
It's still expected. We are going to begin the process of providing documentation so that for, and let me have you turn to, on the February report, page five of seven. And you can kind of see where we are right now. We have already spent $2.3 million. It's about two-thirds of the way down on page five of seven in February. So the actual cash paid out for tuitions and some settlements is $2,330,685. We have encumbered, those are for kids that we've already paid out on, but taking them in their placements through the end of the year, another $1,79,975. And you can see that I dropped my projection a little bit, because as we look towards the end of February into March, and then into April, those tuitions, any new tuitions coming onboard will be significantly less. So you've got in March for March, April, May, and June, and then it continues down three months, two months, et cetera. So last month, I had showed you $150,000 projection. I dropped it to 120. And clearly, as we get to May, the costs are nominal.
Can I just follow up on that? I'm assuming that since we use the exact number from the excess cost grant to zero out the balance, that there is, in fact, potentially more than that. What is the total potential amount in the excess cost grant that we could ask the town for?
The potential is somewhere between $775,000 and $800,000. Again, there's some philosophical differences.
Really?
What I am showing is simply netting to zero.
Right.
As we move forward into the next few months, I think that the board will need to work with the superintendent and myself to direct where we're going. But the prudent projection would be to net, since we haven't actually received anything.
I understand. Okay. I think that's something we'll need to be following up on, certainly. Are there any other questions that anyone has? Sherri?
So, no, I just have a different question for Brian, and just in light of, we had a very exciting announcement last week about our new, our next high school principal, and I just thought maybe if you could reiterate that for anyone who didn't see that announcement, or...
Oh, yeah. Right under announcements in future meetings.
Sorry. I didn't mean to.
No, no, it's okay.
Moving on then, on the agenda. Before we get there, we have a little bit, we have one more important thing in between. First, I just want to say thank you, Ms. Harris, also for the, helping us through those numbers and what's happening. Consent agenda. We have a consent agenda, and we need to have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you, Allison. A second. Thank you, Scott. All those in favor, that's unanimous of everyone that's here. Move down now to announcements in future meetings.
Perfect. So we had tentatively scheduled an April I meeting. Turns out, we don't need that meeting, so that meeting's been canceled. So on our next meeting, which is the April 13th, we'll have a graduation date set at that meeting. And we're discussing having an athletics report. There's been some requests from the board for Mr. Egan to join us and talk a bit about the athletics and things. But also, coming up, as Sherri mentioned, we had a very exciting announcement last week on Tuesday, where Mr. Egan, who is the principal of Womago High School and Middle School up in Connecticut, which serves Warren, Morris, and Goshen, that's just how they come up with the name Womago, and actually pulls students from 10 other towns into it. He's our next principal, beginning July 1st. He would have been with us tonight. He very much wanted to be here tonight. But he's currently probably, he's probably home by now, but he was, Sunday and Monday, he was up in Providence, where the National League of, or New England League of Middle Schools was honoring him and his school as a spotlight school for all of New England for the middle school piece. A spotlight school is a school that the league selects from throughout New England, and they select a couple, they were their only school from Connecticut, that they highlight the school and their practices as best practices, and they identify some things that they see that they're doing. It's very much, it's a significant honor for him in school. And the exemplary practices that they were highlighting were their use of educational technology, their one-to-one program, their connections program, which is the transition from eighth into ninth grade. They have a Whatever It Takes program, which is student assistance, sort of their RTI program, town hall meetings that they have, and then the strength of the mental health team. So today, a team from the school, last night, or Sunday night was the, last night was the recognition dinner, where he and the school, the people were honored. And then today, they ran a workshop all day long for members of the league to watch, and their, the use of Google Apps in education in order to enhance learning, which is a wonderful connection for us, of course, because, you know, we are Google Apps District, and we use that as well. So although he was ready to leave all of that and give it up and come down, I said, stay, enjoy this, celebrate this, you know, be a part of the training today and teach others and improve the profession that way. And he'll join us at a future meeting, likely in April, to be able to say hello and to meet everybody. But I've gotten lots of positive feedback from many people across the state. We're very much looking forward to Bill making the transition here. And although they share the same last name, there's no relationship to Mr. Egan. Jay Egan, our athletic director. If I could, just continue on announcements, just a little bit more. Just to say, March has been proclaimed in Connecticut School Board Member Appreciation Month. So I just want to just take a minute to recognize the considerable contributions that all the members of our Board of Education here make towards our education, the education of our children every single day. You know, school board members contribute their time, talent, and considerable energy towards the advancement of public education, both here in New Canaan and throughout the state. The great work that our schools accomplish every day, as we heard from our curriculum specialists and Dr. Crenti and others, really is doing no small part to your commitment, to your hard work. And truly, the students of New Canaan, the parents, and the community, entire community owes you a significant debt of gratitude for all that you do. As superintendent, I get to see firsthand the significant contributions that you make. Although I was aware of them as a building principal, by no means was I aware of them as a building principal. So for me, for all of us who work in the New Canaan Public Schools, and I think for the entire community, just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for all of your work and let you know that it certainly is appreciated.
Thank you. And I see there's a little box here that's...
There's a little box of Bridgewater chocolates.
Well, that sounds delicious.
If you haven't had Bridgewater chocolates before, you'll have them again after you try these little boxes in front of you. They're excellent.
Thank you for that nice present.
Bridgewater Chocolate actually started in Bridgewater, Connecticut, but then a few years ago moved to Brookfield. They started actually in this, in the store, the One Country Store in Bridgewater. And then they got too big for that and sort of grew and grew, and their factories were less than a mile from my house. So I enjoy it regularly as well. I hope you enjoy it. I do. It's really good. Also, just to take a very quick moment to congratulate all of our high school students who participated in Grease over the weekend, and what an outstanding show.
Too much.
Hopefully, an opportunity to see it, and of course, Sangita's sons, and all the students. I mean, the work that went into that, it was, every year, it's just more and more impressive. It's just stunning, the music, the choreography, the sets, the everything coming together, really outstanding. And then if you missed it, you have an opportunity to go this weekend to see Seussical, which is our Saks play for the year. And I just want to, again, commend them for all the work. I just was talking to a few folks telling me that they were practicing in hallways and in cafeteria and in any open spot they could find in preparation for the show. They were here today, and they'll be here as they gear up. And then this weekend, they'll put their show on, Seussical. So it's a lot happening, and it's a great, great place to be.
Good stuff.
All good stuff.
Wow, that's terrific. I wanted to add my thanks also to the board. At this particular time, we have a number of things going on. And I looked down, and starting with our chairman of the Saks Building Committee, I almost said, it almost came out, the Building Committee, and how much work has been on that. And I know that Jean's helped on the, worked on also the South School work, and been very appreciated. The Strategic Committee with Sangita and with Scott has been working, working on some new things for us to work on as spring comes in, and we're looking forward to hearing about that and more of it. And certainly, the Resource Committee has just been doing gallant work. So thank you both to Allison, and especially to the Chair, Deanna. And our Communications Committee has continued to do communicating, and we appreciate what you, also, the two on the end, right there, Sangita and Jen, who have been on the committee that was to select the principal. So we look forward to the hard work that you've put in on that, and also, thank you to, thank you to Kelly Cass also for the leadership on that, and appreciative of our people that have been working on the budget and the things that we've been doing. And thank you very much, Dr. Crenti, for this wonderful presentation tonight. Look forward to watching it again. And on that note, we'll look at it.
Get the insurance card.
That's right. A lot of hard work. And if I can, I couldn't pass up Ms. Piankett, so I would just thank you for what you do all the time, too. Well, I'll go now to saying about, are there any comments from the public? If anyone would come forward for that. I see that there's no one coming forward, so motion to adjourn. Sherri, thank you. And a second from Sangita, thank you. All is in favor, and that means a full house. Thank you.